Okay, we're going live.
We, let's see, I got one minute for five, so I guess we still got a minute or two, correct?
Correct.
Can you all just say, where were those minutes located? Harry had asked me where those minutes are. Think it was in the last email package or?
It's in your Dropbox, under minutes, Charlie.
Okay, Harry had asked me that as well, so I just want to.
Jeremy, if you can make me host again. Appreciate it.
Mr. Morgan, Chloe, we ready?
Not quite yet. Charlie, on a, I get, okay, I'm back to being host, so, uh, let me.
You let me know when we'll get started.
Okay, you can go ahead, Charlie.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to this City of Charleston, June 17th Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to start off the meeting with a virtual moment of silence in honor of the tragedy and the loss of the folks from the Emmanuel AME Church, as well as the firemen, the parrists at the sofa superstore. We should never forget these people or their acts, so we're gonna have a moment of silence now if we can. Thank you all for that. So everyone knows, the planning commission members are appointed by the City of Charleston, we're volunteers, and I know I join everyone in thanking them for their service. I'm gonna recognize the planning commission members at this time. My name is Charlie Carish, I'm the chairman. I'm joined by the co-chairman, Mr. Harry Lassane, Mr. Jimmy Bailey, there's Erica Harrison, Dr. Eddie Irons, there's Donna Jacobs, there's Angie Johnson, there's Sunday Lampasis, and Mr. Sean Flug. I appreciate everyone's work. We're gonna run through the way we, the procedure of the meeting. We come up, I'll announce the item on the agenda, and I'll read it into the record. At that time, we'll ask Mr. Morgan or someone from staff to address the item on the agenda and go through it. After that, we'll hear from the applicant. At that point, we'll hear from anyone or any comments that Mr. Morgan has, the city has, anybody in favor of the application. After that, we'll hear from anyone else who is opposed to the application or wants to comment on the application. At that time, we'll then hear back from the applicant, who can address any concerns that were brought up or have some final comments. After that, we'll close the public hearing of the, that, of the meeting, and we'll then hear from commission members, and entertain any motions, have discussion, et cetera. With that being said, Mr. Morgan, if any other, any deferrals that we need to know of, I know I've got an agenda here, anything else we need updates on the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, everything is moving forward today.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I hope that everyone, I know we've had some, if we, if we want, we can do this, maybe it'd be better if we do this at the end of the meeting, since some people haven't had a chance to totally review them, so why don't we take this up at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with everyone? So the first item on the agenda then will be rezonings, number one, 295 Calhoun Street, Harlston Village, Peninsula, TMS, 4570202001, approximately 2.1 acres, request rezoning from height district 8530, classification to height district seven, seven stories classification. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just real quickly, I'm gonna introduce virtually.
I'm sorry.
Who are gonna be participating today, my name is.
I apologize, if you would introduce your staff as well, and I'm sorry I excluded that.
No problem. I'm Christopher Morgan, I'm planning manager here at the City of Charleston. I'll be reading off a lot of these items and giving a lot of the staff recommendations. Lee Batchell, our zoning administrator, will be participating on a harp, our senior zoning planner will be participating. Chloe Stubber has put all this together, and a special tip of the hat to Chloe, because it's been a Herculean task over the last 24 hours to get all the materials together and comments together, because we've had quite a few comments. Marcia Grant is our clerk, and Philip Overcash is also our senior planner here, he is here helping with technical issues. And then Jacob Lindsay, from our Director of Planning Preservation Sustainability, will also be making some comments and presenting some cases today. The virtual meeting protocol, I think Mr. The Chairman mentioned just a little bit about that, but essentially, the staff will control the PowerPoint slides. Everyone is required to give their name first whenever speaking, that way, even if your image is not being shown at the moment, we can know who's speaking. Video and microphone have been disabled for all attendees. Public only be giving the capability to speak when they're called on during the public comment period. Applicants will be promoted to panelists during the duration of their item, giving them temporary access to the microphone and video. Chat and Q&amp;A functions have been disabled, these meetings are being recorded. The chairman has already talked about the order of the meeting, so we're gonna move on from there. And the commission members will be seen both on video and heard when speaking. Commissioners will be polled by the chairman for comments on their votes, or for their votes. And commissioners that need to recuse themselves from voting will be temporarily removed from the meeting and readmitted prior to addressing the next agenda item. There might be an executive session tonight, and for that, they will, the commission will go into a separate conference line, and all video and audio on Zoom will be temporarily turned off until they're ready to return to the regular meeting. Public comment to the meeting, public comment for today's meeting, and we've already mentioned about this. So we're gonna move on from that, and on to the first item that the chairman has announced, and 295 Calhoun Street in Harlston Village. This is a request to change the height on the site from the current 8530 height district to the new height by stories district, and a request to go up to seven stories on the site. The owner and the applicant of this property is the Medical University of South Carolina. We'll move on to some other images to give you some background on this. And actually, on this first image, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself, but just to orient everyone, I don't know if you can see my cursor here. Can you all see my cursor? Is that, is that, yes, okay. So the site is here in the middle, this is Calhoun Street, running through the medical district. Roper Hospital is directly across the street. The new MUFC Sean Jenkins Hospital is right here. Alberta Long Lake is to the south. There is a new Roper Hospital surface parking lot to the west. And to the east is another surface parking lot, some medical offices, and then housing as you proceed back into the Harlston Village neighborhood. In our Century 5 City Plan, this is a site that is in our urban core. And that is where we recommend for the densest, most intense uses in the city. So it obviously is something that's a little bit more than just a two or three-story height district. Here are some aerial images. These two buildings to the west have been demolished for the surface parking lot. The new Sean Jenkins Hospital is now complete here and open. Roper is right here, surface parking lot is here, other medical office and residential is here, and of course, the lake is to the south. Here is a view from the east, and again, you see the certain, the site, you can see a little bit further down Halsey Boulevard. That's a new planned unit development that's been developed in here for residential purposes. The Ashley House condominiums are in this location, and of course, Roper Hospital over here. And here we see again, Roper Hospital to the north, and the other surrounding uses. This is an image that shows the new Sean Jenkins Hospital and the Roper Hospital on the other side of 295 Calhoun, and this is Courtney Drive heading north. This is looking on Halsey Boulevard headed north towards the Roper Hospital building. This, I believe, is a medical office building across the street on Halsey. And here we are, looking down Calhoun to the east. The subject property is where this building is at present, you can see the Roper Hospital parking lot under construction there. And the staff's recommendation is for approval, because this is in the urban core. We also feel that with the Roper facility across the way, that this would be a balanced height in this gateway area of Charleston. We also feel that there are some other more significant heights nearby, and I'm gonna go back to some other slides, such as the Sean Jenkins Hospital here, that comes in about 11, 12 stories. Also, the Ashley House that comes in at 12, 13 stories, there's another image from the applicant that shows some of these as well. So we felt like this was an appropriate location for this increase in height. We're also do applaud the fact that the applicant is asking for height by stories, because we did want to convert a lot of these newer structures to height by stories, as opposed to just pure number of feet. We are going to move forward and let the applicant make some comments. And I will pull up, once the applicant starts their discussion, their slide that they have provided to us.
Christopher, can you hear me?
Yes, Jason.
Okay. Hi, Christopher, thank you, thank you for the presentation, and members of planning commission, thank you for hearing this matter tonight. As, as was alluded to, we went through the rezoning, I'm Jason Long with Southeastern. Speaking on behalf of MUFC, we have the property under contract and intend to close in the next couple of weeks. And we went through a rezoning for MU1 zoning, which is the current zoning, with 85 feet. The goal here is not to increase the density, but rather create a much higher quality project. We want to have higher ceiling height in the project, and that create more value, that it's a nicer place to live, and just a nicer overall project. So that's the goal number one, and why we're here tonight. We have met on several occasions with the Harlston Village HOA. First, a few times regarding the initial rezoning of MU1. And most recently, we presented the, the plan, some other elevations that, that I don't know if Christopher can show to everybody. But so that was presented to the HOA. One thing that did come up during that meeting, this is the image, was, was traffic and access. And after that, following, we heard the comments, and we reached out to DOT and Michael Baker International as their engineer, who is planning the improvements to Calhoun Street currently, and asked about access. And we were told by DOT and Michael Baker that, that they would, would not allow our access to be on Calhoun, but rather it would need to be off of, off of Halsey Boulevard. So I wanted to provide that context, and that was from, again, DOT and Michael Baker International, their, their engineer. Yes, and also, just to further that, that point, our target market, we believe, will, will, will be largely walking to, to work. So we don't think that there'll be a peak hour, it, it will not be the, the full project leaving at peak hour. As many folks, and that's the reason that we, quite frankly, like the site, that many people will, will walk to work. So just a, just a side note there. And lastly, the, the plan here, that's, that's shown is, is shown what, is what, what could be built with merit. We, we intend this to be a Class A, first-class project, and this is just to show the scale. And, and with that, just looking at the surrounding buildings, you know, the Ashley House, which is just on the other, other corner of Long Lake there, is 138 feet in, in height, and then just behind the site, the, the new MUFC Children's Hospital is 206 feet. I, I really think, so we're at 85 feet now, we're really think this will add, our intention is probably about 10 to 15 feet in height overall. And, and looking ground up, I, I know I'm not good enough to, to tell you what's 10 and 15 feet when I'm standing on the ground, when something's 80 feet in the air. So I think from the eye, it won't make a, a very large impact, but it is very impactful when you're inside these units, and how they live, and how they will perform. And, and again, just, just makes a nicer overall project with greater value. So with that, I'll be quiet, and thank you again for hearing this, this matter.
Christopher, do we have other comments, comments positive, or other comments that we should hear at this point?
We do.
Yes, Charlie, no one has signed up to speak in favor, we do have one person signed up to speak in opposition, so I'm going to call on them now.
Okay.
Okay. passion, you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Cassian Droule with Historic Charleston Foundation, 40 East Bay Street. Good evening, commissioners. HCF has reviewed the rezoning requests for 295 Calhoun Street from height district 8530 to height district seven. HCF applauds the applicant for requesting a rezoning in stories rather than feet. We believe this will have a positive outcome for the building design and architecture. However, after careful study of the surrounding areas of the property to the east, and the small-scale development taking place to the south, along Halsey Boulevard, we believe that height district six is more appropriate for this property. Thus, we respectfully request the planning commission deny the application for height district seven. We believe development of this parcel will set a precedent for development of the southwestern portion of Calhoun Street, and that precedent. We additionally.
You're fading out.
You're breaking up, if you could repeat the last sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we, I'm actually standing in one of our historic properties, and I'm in the basement. And so it's either Wi-Fi or cellphone signal, pick one, they don't coincide. But we support the Harlston Village Association's request that the property be split into two height districts, with the taller height portion, height district six, along the Calhoun front edge to a depth of 125 feet. And then the shorter height portion, height district four, to the rear facing the neighborhood and Long Lake.
Thank you, and, and we have, I think we have that in our package of statement, as well as, I think we have a, Chloe, correct me if I'm wrong, a letter from a store, Harlston Village Association?
Yeah, there are three written comments that were submitted, and so Christopher will read them into the record.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay, so, and I'm gonna go back just to, so we're on the rezoning slide, just for ease of identifying some things to do. So there we go. Okay. So the first comment is from John Bleeker at 80 Halsey Boulevard. His comment is that MUFC is not the applicant, developer has contract but does not have legal title to the property. Hopefully, he will abandon project if the additional height is denied. This workforce housing apartment building is unfortunate since it blocks view from Roper Hospital to Long Lake. MUFC should be ashamed for adding this tower in front of Roper Hospital while Roper developed a landscape parking, parking park in front of MUFC. Number 39, I'm not sure what that is, New Children's Hospital. This building is a mistake, it would be the tallest structure on the south side of Calhoun Street between the James Island Bridge and East Bay Street. In addition, traffic on Halsey during the afternoon school pickup time at Mason Prep School backs traffic around the corner to Calhoun. Also, the evening go-home, James Island traffic often use Halsey as a shortcut to James Island Bridge. Limiting the traffic with a smaller building should create less traffic volume. Please deny this application for the sake of residents living in Halsey Park, for many single-family homeowners living south of Calhoun. Then we've got the letter from the Harlston Village Association, which I will turn to now. Chloe, do they have copies of the letter, or, I mean, I'm still gonna read it, just.
Yes, all, all commissioners have copies of every comment that was submitted, either via email or in the innovative forum, and so does our clerk.
Okay, this says, Dear Planning Commission, the Harlston Village Association is concerned with the application for a height change at 295 Calhoun Street from the existing 8530 district to the height district seven. Although there are compelling reasons that the new height district is based on stories rather than feet may result in more desirable architecture for the city, we are concerned that a much taller building at this site could be achieved than the existed allowed height of 85 feet, depending on use or ownership. Although the proposed use is apartments, the owner or use for the site could potentially change in the future, which could result in even taller structures. Based on the site being located south of Calhoun Street, which has a different and much smaller scale than north of Calhoun, the location of nearby residential in Halsey, Berry, and Bennett Streets, nearby historic buildings and the properties we are facing over, properties we are facing Alberta Long Lake. We were proposed that the commission consider splitting height district along height district seven on the Calhoun front edge for a depth of 125 feet, and the remaining rear of the property be rezoned height district four. 125 feet would be similar to the depths of other Calhoun Street properties east of this, which is more typical of the neighborhood. I'm just gonna pause here for a second to show, what I think they're talking about is that next door to the east, you see a height district of four, and you see how there's a break line, and then you go into the height district of, let me, three. So three back there, and then here you have height district five, and again, going to height district three. So this is about 125 feet in depth, and so what I think they're proposing is that it, the taller height not go further back than this. That seems to be the discussion. This would allow proposed development to step down, to be more sympathetic to the neighborhood, more sympathetic to the neighboring commercial, institutional, and residential properties in Harlston Village, and would create a more attractive building as well. The Harlston Village Association feels our proposal will be most appropriate for the site, and urge your consideration supporting the neighborhood's concerns. Thank you. And then we have the position statement from Cassian from Historic Charleston. Chloe, are we reading that, or are we, since Cassian has already spoken, are we?
Why don't we, why don't we at least say that we have that in, in writing, not only did we hear from the, from the Historic Charleston, we also have a letter from them in opposition, I guess, to the request, is that, is that the act?
What the letter does say is that they would support the idea of two height districts, a taller height district six along Calhoun to 125 feet, and shorter height district four to the rear facing the neighborhood along Lake.
Great, okay, thanks. Do Chloe or Mr. Moore, any other comments from anyone else, do we have?
There should have been three total.
Okay, and I think.
Is there a third one?
Yeah.
I think Christopher read it, Mr. Bleeker? Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. If there's no others, can we hear back from the applicant, would he like to respond to this?
Yes, please. Yes, please, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. We, we were aware of, of the letter, and again, we've met with Harlston Village several times, and, and they fully supported the rezoning to the 85 feet and the MU1. And, and we are not seeking a greater number of, of units and density. We simply want it to make a nicer project, as I think was mentioned in the letter, it'd be more attractive project architecturally, and we strongly believe that as well. The, the, the comment about splitting, we were aware of that, and, and we, we looked at that, considered that with our architects. But it just does not give us the, the amount of units by dropping it to, to four stories on the second 125 feet of the property to, to, to make it financially feasible. It's, it, it cuts the amount of units out, a, a large amount of units out, and, and it just renders the project not feasible from a, from a financial standpoint. So again, we're not looking to increase density, we're just looking to make nicer units. We don't intend to change use and make it much higher than, than 10 to 15 feet. And, and I believe Historic Charleston also said, architecturally, it would be better going to height in stories. But the district seven is, is, again, what we need to make the project work.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Long, that's gonna close the pub, public aspect of this. We'll now have comments, questions from commission members, motions. Chloe, if you'll help me, if anybody, if they wanna be recognized, I'd appreciate it.
We have Sunday and Donna.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs, can we hear from you first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear anything about the number of workforce housing units that will be constructed in this, if it's given what it's needed. If we could get an answer on that, please.
Chris, do we have, do we have anybody from staff, or can tell us anything on that, do you know?
Yeah, it will have to meet the number of workforce housing units that are specified in the ordinance, or the, it's based on the density of the units, I believe it is 15, 20%, I need to look that up. But there is, you know, that is dictated by how many total units are in there, and it's percentage.
Okay, so that, that would be mandated, Ms. Jacobs, you had a follow-up?
No, thank you, I just, 15%, you don't need to go look anything up, Christopher, thank you for the answer.
Mr. Lampasis, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just, following staff's recommendation, I would like to move for approval unless anybody else has any comments.
Okay, well, we can take a motion for approval and still take comments, there's a motion by Ms. Lampasis. Any other comments, second? Ms. Johnson?
Harry, Harry would like, Mr. Lassane would like to speak, Charlie.
Okay, so Ms. Johnson seconds the motion, but Mr. Lassane?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, Christopher, if we approve this, seven, height district seven, seven stories, is our, if I remember, our BAR, BAR ordinance allows merit-based increases?
That's correct.
What is the, what's the maximum number of stories that could go here, is seven the max?
It could be an extra story with merit given by BAR.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, thanks.
And I do wanna correct myself, it is 20% workforce housing, not 15, 20% workforce housing units.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moore. Was any else wanted to comment? If not, we have a motion by Ms. Lampasis, or a second by Ms. Johnson, I'm a, I guess there's no other comments, I'm gonna call the roll and ask everyone to vote. Mr. Lassane?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison? Ms. Harrison with us?
Yes.
I don't hear.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dr. Irons? Dr. Irons?
Aye, in favor.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you seconded the motion, but I'm gonna call your name anyway.
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Lampasis?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flug?
Aye, in favor.
And I will vote in favor of the application as well, so I think we, that's a unanimous vote, I believe, Mr. Morgan.
All right, yes, that is.
Okay, great. Item number two, under rezonings, there's 1144 Folly Road. Corner, James Island, TMS. Say it again?
You're, it faded out, you faded out.
I'll, I'll read it again, item number two, how's that, Chris, okay?
Much better.
Okay, item number two is 1144 Folly Road, McCalls Corner, James Island, TMS number 425130031, approximately .38 acres, request rezoning, single-family residential to residential office and Folly Road overlay. Mr. Morgan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is a fairly straightforward request. This is a property that was annexed into the city a number of years ago with an office already functioning in the property. And the owner was essentially grandfathered in with a residential office and insurance firm in the site, and now is seeking to have permanently the residential office applied to it. And the surrounding area, if you'll look, I hope my cursor is showing up, this is Folly Road running north and south. Shandon Street is to the north immediately, and it is where it leads back into a neighborhood to the rear that's all residential. But there are other properties along Folly that have commercial designations. Across the street is limited business with small strip shopping centers. There's some other offices along this stretch of Folly Road as well with the residential office designation. And of course, everything that's in the city in this area that is commercially zoned would be subject to the Folly Road overlay as well. I'll show a few pictures here. Of course, this is in our Century 5 Plan, it's in our highway designation, as most of Folly Road is, so our. Uh of course, this is in our Century Five plan, it's in our highway designation as most of hot Folly Road is, so RO would be compliant with that. Uh here is an aerial image of the house that is on the site that has been used as a business in the past. Uh and then you see some of the surrounding houses and other parcels that have uh office designations. The retail facility that is across the street as well. Uh here's a street view of the subject property. You can see that there's a sign out in front for the insurance agency that was in the house. Um and the surrounding character has maintained its residential character despite being as this business. Here you see Folly Road, again, the subject property is over here, the nationwide sign. And then you see some other businesses further down Folly and then the retail on the other side of Folly Road. And uh one more image here, which is Folly Road uh further to the uh south, I believe. And um our staff recommendation is for approval on this. We felt it was very appropriate, given the the plans designation of the area and the fact that it had been an office in the past. And the RO helps to keep the residential character that we're trying to promote along this area of Folly Road.
Do we have the applicant with us, Mr. Morgan?
Uh yes, yes, we do. Um Mr. Owens, there are three of you uh signed in. I just wanna make sure I promote the right person to panelists. Can you raise your hand uh if you're on your phone? You do that by star nine. Use the raise hand function to let me know which one of you to promote. Okay, uh this is just gonna repeat. Mr. Jim Owens. Like to uh promote you to panelists so that you can present this application. There are three of you, however, um listed as an attendee. So if you could raise your hand, use the raise hand function to indicate which one of you. Okay, in that case, I'm going to promote all three Jim Owens. Want to make sure.
If we can hear from them, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. So. Okay, so Jim. You should have the ability to unmute yourself. Not hearing from Jim, okay. The owner is also on the on the on the in the attendee, so I'm going to. Uh unmute her. Ms. Woods Flowers, you should be able to speak.
Hey there, yeah, I think I'm unmuted, how are you?
Good, how are you? Very good.
Hear me?
Go ahead, please, if you would.
Um. We get a lot of people.
Good.
Yes.
We heard from Cheryl Wood, we can hear her, does she wanna speak?
Okay, you could, Mr. Owens, try speaking again. I've removed uh uh your duplicates, I think you might have had several uh meeting windows open.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes, let's go.
Sorry about the confusion. My name is Jim Owens and I'm a representative for the applicant at eleven forty four Folly Road. I wanna thank you in advance for hearing our request and hope that you'll agree that residential office and Folly Road overlay. On the property is the proper zoning for this parcel. Although the property is currently zoned R one, it's been operating for two decades. As a commercial designation from its business licenses to its tax tax assessment. The city has issued permits for this property over the years, which gives the appearance as already being treated as a grandfathered use. We're hopeful that the city will recommend approval of this request and rezone the parcel. To a residential office and Folly Road overlay designation, given its existing use. I'd like to thank the planning staff who has helped guide us since March through this difficult circumstance that we're currently living under. And again, thank you for your review of our application and consideration, hearing our request. I'm happy to stand by and answer any questions.
That thank you, Ms. Owens. Chloe, has anybody else signed up to speak on this? Any other applicants or anybody speaking in favor or against this application?
Uh Christopher, if you could read the one written comment we have in favor.
I will. Uh Susan Milliken has sent us a comment on this. She says that she supports this rezoning to RO as it is in keeping with the other properties in the section of Folly Road.
Okay, and then we have Councilmember Jackson signed up to speak. Councilmember Jackson, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I'll be very brief. Um I do support this rezoning for all the reasons stated by Mr. Morgan and the applicant. Um in addition, uh we did just um uh begin to work with the property owner next door. Who also has the residential office zoning, so these two properties will be contiguous and and uh in like um capacity. So I I would strongly urge you to say yes.
Great, and and there's no one else signed up to speak on this?
Nobody else.
Okay, and Mr. Owens is applicant, I'm I'm assuming since nobody's against the application, you're okay with us proceeding? We'll go ahead and uh close the public comment, I I wouldn't think he'd have anything to say, nobody was against the application. To close the public aspect of this, uh questions, comments, motions of commission members?
Now we have uh Mr. Lassane and Mr. Bailey with their hands raised.
Okay, Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey, go ahead whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry about that, I've moved for approval of the request.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments, uh Mr. Lassane?
I will second that motion.
Great, there's a motion and second, any other comments? If not, uh I'll call for any other comments? If not, we'll call for the question, I'll read the uh roll. Uh Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
Uh Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Dr. Irons?
Aye, in favor.
Uh Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Uh Ms. Lampasus? Ms. Lampasus? Uh.
Aye, in favor.
Great, uh Mr. Flug?
Aye, in favor.
And I'm in favor as well, so that is a unanimous vote on uh uh rezoning number two.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on to uh rezoning number three, which is uh Maybank.
Charlie, the applicant is requesting to speak.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Owens, you wanna speak?
No, I just wanted to uh thank you as the chairman and members of the commission um for this review. Uh I think this is gonna serve us all well, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Uh item number three is Maybank Highway, Johns Island, TMS number three one three. Zero 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 zero, I hope I got enough zeros. Four three dash oh three one dash three oh six dash three oh seven dash oh three four dash oh three five. Approximately twenty two point three seven acres, request rezoning from single family residential. General business of Maybank Highway corridor overlay district in Charleston County to planned unit development. South station. Uh Mr. Morgan?
Okay, so this is a property that involves several parcels that are not currently in the city. But whose uh annexation is pending. These parcels are shown in white. This parcel here on the eastern side of the property and then two narrow parcels on the western side of the property. Then it also incorporates a parcel that is own general business in the city here, an SR six. Which is uh medium density, single family in this location here and then to the rear and SR six as well. Um just to orient you all to the surrounding area, Maybank is of course here running east and west. Uh the builder's first source facility and surrounding shops is in this location here. The new Crown Maybank and Maybank, I guess it's Oak Live Oak Village, something like that, I think is the name, is over here to the east. Uh Walter Drive is here to the west. Meeks Farm Road and its kind of business park setup is directly across the street. Um and then you've got uh well, existing residential lots to the west and uh Trophy Lakes facilities to the east here as well. Um I'm gonna go and show you some pictures here as well and you all have the PUD document in front of you. Um in our comprehensive plan, this is showing as a urban and neighborhood center. And there are three centers as shown in the Johns Island plan, I'll show you an image for that in just a minute. But you see those, so it's well within those three kind of mixed use centers on Johns Island. Uh here is an image from the Johns Island plan, again, the property is located right here. And in the 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 concept behind these centers is that they would be very walkable. It would be less than a five minute walk from this uh mixed use facility uh to the the Live Oak Village that's over here on Maybank. And to uh nearby housing, so it's almost a walkable district in this area. Um the um property here involves uh multiple parcels and you see this one would be annexed, this one would be annexed. And the one to the uh north would be annexed. And the other ones are already in, the property to the rear is already somewhat cleared, there are some grand trees on the property as well. Uh I'm gonna go through some of the slides from the PUD itself now. Um one of the key things about this PUD is that um it would not have residential component. And I should probably back up and point out how right now there is a good bit of residential that is allowed on the property. And we hear a lot of times from folks on Johns Island that they're concerned about how much residential is coming, yet they want more services and things like that. Well, this is a PUD that I think will achieve that because all the residential densities that would be in this uh site are going to go away. And it would instead become mixed use, office, commercial, uh things like that. Um so uh very much in line with what Johns Islanders have been talking about. Uh here you see the different districts that would be within this PUD, a a business park district in this location here. A um uh recreational business district in this location here that would involve some boat storage and some office space. And then the uh small industrial district uh that would also allow for a uh event space and a brewery and and other uses such as that in the rear. Um I am going to move on to the next image here. It shows the open space on the site that is needing all our requirements for open space within the PUD, the twenty percent open space. Uh there are a lot of water bodies in the area that would be part of this, but they would be attractively designed to be a amenity to this while also handling stormwater detention. Uh then we've got another image here from the PUD that shows um drainage in the area again. These are stormwater facilities that would be incorporated. Um I think another interesting and very important part of this development is the connector road that would run east and west here. And this is in line with our Johns Island plan that there would be a system of roads that would help parallel Maybank Highway. And allow for more neighborhood and connected trips between parcels. Uh so that folks could go between parcels without having to make all their trips out on Maybank Highway. That will help preserve the capacity of Maybank Highway as we move forward with um uh further development along it. So um staff's uh recommendation on this is for approval. Uh you've seen the uh TRC uh documents that are in your package that show uh the various levels of the TRC review that have been achieved. Um and uh we feel comfortable with this and the applicants have worked for a long time with the city, at least over the last six or nine months. So uh we feel like they are really working to achieve things that are called for in our area plans.
Mr. Morgan, I had one quick question. Normally, when we get property that's being annexed and you correct me if I'm wrong, usually we hear it under zonings.
Yes, sir.
We're just zoning the property in versus they're coming in as a rezoning, can you just clarify that?
And we have these listed in the zoning section of the um uh agenda, but for for simplicity. We thought you could handle all of the both the rezoning and the zoning in one discussion set. And just have a motion that cover both of those uh items, the rezoning and the zoning of the newly annexed properties or to be.
Okay, great, great, and do we have the uh applicant here or applicants here to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, you go ahead, identify yourself and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Andrew Todd Burke and I'm a landscape architect with HLA. And uh we are representing the the clients here for this project. Thank you, Christopher, for the introduction and thank you, commission members, for hearing our um. Our application tonight, so um I wanted to just touch on a few additional things um about this PUD. Uh once again, that no residential units will be allowed as part of this rezoning. And uh we have three different types of districts that we are going to um have in in this PUD. Um one would be the business parts park district, which is gonna be more of a general commercial area. Um for offices and and retail use. Um there is an existing law office in the recreational business district that will continue to operate. As well as some dry boat storage as well that will continue to operate in that area. And then in the back, uh the small industrial district is planned to uh move Low Tide Brewery there. Um and also have areas for community event space, perhaps. Uh community gardens or farmers markets um to to really draw in people there and and be a boon to the community. Um I also wanted to touch on the fact that uh we are uh not only, as Christopher mentioned. Um consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Century Five plan, as well as the Johns Island Community Plan. Um but also the Dutch Dialogues and uh per the Dutch Dialogue report, we are in the um community zone, I believe it is called. Uh we're above elevation fifteen, um which promotes uh residential to urban density. Um and we also are um in the front there, uh in that green portion, right in the front. You can see that we have a buffer there and that's consistent with the um proposed Maybank Highway overlay district. Um that's being worked on with the city and the county, which will include a a wide multi-use path as well as street trees. Um along Maybank Highway there. Um just to reiterate, reiterate once again, we are also creating the interconnectivity um by adding that parallel road. And I think this is a a great opportunity because we were able to combine several parcels together. Um and add that length of road in there, um which, you know, as as the city knows and I'm sure you're well aware, it can be tough when you have to piece melt. So this is a a good section that can get built all at once. Um Christopher mentioned some grand trees, uh there are about seventy grand trees on the site. Um in our current plans right now, we we're only calling to remove uh three of them, we have not gone through DZA. And they're in poor condition, um the three that are proposed to be removed. Um the other thing about stormwater is that uh we have worked hard to resolve all issues with TRC members prior to this meeting. We worked with the stormwater department. Um and our PUD promotes the uh use of LID and green infrastructure practices. And as we go further in development, uh we we hope to see them come here as well. And I just wanna say thank you again, and if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Morgan, Chloe, do we have anyone that wants to uh speak in favor or concerns about this application?
There are no comments submitted for this and no one signed up to speak, uh but Ms. Jacobs' hand is raised.
Okay, uh Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead. Oh, let me do this, let me uh, did you have a question, the application, otherwise it's a close out the public aspect of this.
Uh these are my questions are for the city, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
About the public aspect of this and uh we'll go to commission members, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um I just wanted to, you know, have a few clarity points here. Um first of all, um I was excited about this um sort of what I like call the back frontage road, this um connecting road. Is there a timeline for which their section is going to connect with other sections of the road, Christopher? Is there any?
That would be the development on adjoining parcels. I'm gonna go to an image here, right now, we've got uh where the. I'm going to go to an image here. Right now we've got where the road would be, which is essentially right here, here's this, this lake on the property or joining property. So the road would be roughly in here weaving between these ponds. And right now there is not another development here or to the south. However, I'll let Andrew talk a little bit about, you know, what their timing would be in reference to phasing and, and construction of that road within their own property.
That's not necessarily important. I just wondered how, if there was other things coming in line to where the, the road itself would be highly functional with, except within their own property. So.
Further down Maybank, we do have some places that, you know, I don't know if our aerial, I don't think our aerial goes that far down. But in this area on Maybank, we've already got a road that's been built here. This Rava Ridge Road. And basically that would one day continue behind, connect with Holliday, continue behind this lake in, in front of this one where the proposed road is here and continue on here. And the idea with these connector roads is that one day as traffic increases along Maybank and as development occurs on more parcels, if there's a gap, it could be that local government would come in and build the small gaps to make those roads connect. We are working on a municipal improvement district for Johns Island that could put some money towards that. And hopefully later this year with that would be adopted and that would include some money that could include connections of roadways along Maybank.
Okay, thank you. I applaud them for that consideration because Maybank is not going to be able to hold the traffic volume as things develop out there. Then I'm, this might've been part of everything, but there was a lot to review. Did Traffic and Transportation review this and have any comments about street design, parking or intersection? Because I, I had a bit of a concern about the intersection when they build with Meeks Farm. They're going to build a road that sort of is a cross intersection there. And then the proposal is to put a lot of the buildings right up to the road front. And I know when they built further down, some shops and a condominium and some apartments in the back. They had what I would call an acceleration, deceleration lane to accommodate like movement into the, to the area. Since this will be kind of a commercial area. I just wondered if that's being considered at all, the, in that intersection there and the, you know, the impact on Maybank Highway of ingress and egress into this site.
I think it'd be good for the applicant to respond on that if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Chloe, can Andrew be unmuted?
Yes, he can unmute himself. There he goes.
Hey, yes. So yes, Donna, we've been in contact with both Traffic and Transportation and SC DOT for this. And part of the improvements to have that entrance be allowed where it is, it is a right-hand turn lane, which will need to be installed. So like you said, a decel lane and a right-hand turn lane coming south on Maybank Highway.
Thank you for that. I just didn't want to see a lot of people backing up to try to get in and out of your site. So I appreciate that. On page 21 of the PUD, they talked about drainage and stormwater management and they've, they referenced the Dutch Dialogues. And I really applaud the applicant for keeping the Dutch Dialogue foremost and, and everything. Although I felt the language in the PUD was a little vague because there are a lot of like our trees to offset water project that Charleston was involved with and water smart park discussions and stuff like that. If it's possible, I'd like to see stronger language in the PUD where things will be more progressively used as modern stormwater management and not just a vague reference to these sorts of things. On page 23, we talked about design review board of the properties that front on Maybank Highway. I have a question because I was just on a design review board call the other night when they reviewed the properties for Old Town Creek County Park. And they were reviewing properties very internal to the park. And I asked the question, why? And it was because any building, any property that fronts it, all the buildings within the property get reviewed. So I'm not sure why all the properties here aren't being reviewed by designer review board. I'm not sure who could ask that question or answer that question for me. Because all the properties within Old Town Creek County Park had to be looked at by designer review board.
Right.
Chris, I would think that'd be a steady question. Can you, can you answer that?
And so here you've got a situation where a lot of these are not going to be seen from the street, which was the original intent of the DRB. I can't speak to the Old Town County Park other than the fact that it's all one parcel. But I do believe here there may be different parcels. Isn't that true, Andrew? And so once there are parcels that don't front on Maybank, of course, those would not be subject to the review. There are new internal city right-of-ways that parcels would come off of. And I think that's part of the reason that the design review would not cover the entire property there.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification. Thank you very much. So my big, my big, you know, other than just the comments I made for clarification, I'm very much in support of this PUD. But I would like to see a little bit stronger language with regard to how stormwater drainage is managed creatively written into it. So that because the PUD is a rezoning and we're bound by it, that we begin to look at those kinds of details moving forward. Other than that, I, I would move for approval of the PUD with the, with that consideration being made about stormwater.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. As a motion by Ms. Jacobs, other questions, comments, seconds by commission members?
Mr. Lussain is raising his hand.
Ms. Lussain, as always, thank you. You go ahead.
Second, Ms. Jacobs' motion.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Lussain. Any other comments, questions? Donna, I appreciate you looking at that so closely and I, and I think you're right, the stronger the language can be, the better. If we approve it and request, hopefully that'll get done that way. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Bailey is raising his hand.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I just wanted to echo the comments about, well, I appreciate the fact that Christopher referenced the importance of the Johns Island Community Plan and that the applicant talks so much about the importance of the Dutch Dialogues. And that Ms. Jacobs, I think appropriately pointed out the, the importance of that secondary connection between neighborhoods. I mean, I think if you look at, if there are places where there have been slip-ups along this corridor, it's been areas where that connectivity doesn't exist. So I support this and will vote for it. But I did want to add those comments that I think they're, I think they're very important.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments, commission members? I, I'd like to clarify, Ms. Jacobs, is, is your motion, Mr. Lussain's second? Because instead we could take these together since it's a rezoning and, and a zoning. Mr. Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we can take those both together. We also read that, that zoning number eight is part of this motion as well to approve that. Is that correct?
Yes. And, and, and make it clear that the parcels that are not in the city that are part of this PUD would be part of your motion for the zoning on those. Yes.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion and the sec?
That is okay with me, Mr. Chairman. If we need to formalize it again somehow, I can try.
Chris, is this, for the record, would that be, is that going to suffice? Or do we need to?
In minutes. I mean, if she wants to just restate that it would include, it would, her motion would be six parcels. And that it would apply to the parcels currently in the city and those that are to be annexed.
If you do that, Ms. Jacobs, and also say the zoning number eight is included in that, all inclusive, that'd be great.
I move that we zone the new parcels, three, ending with three oh six, zero three four and zero three five. And that we rezone all six parcels to a PUD with the condition of stronger language about stormwater management and drainage.
And, and those items are, are item eight under zonings and item number three under rezonings.
That's correct.
Great. Mr. Lussain, are you okay with that as a second?
Yes, I'm, that is my second.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or question, commission members? If not, we'll take a roll vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye, in favor.
And Ms. Harrison?
Aye, in favor.
Dr. Irons?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Lepisus? Ms. Lepisus?
I'm sorry, aye in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lussain?
Aye, in favor.
And Mr. Flu?
Aye, in favor.
And I, I am in favor as well as chairman. So that would be a unanimous vote. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs, for that motion and those comments. We're going to go to rezoning number four, which is two seventy-six Coming Street. Cannonboro, Elliottboro, Peninsula, TMS number four six zero zero four, oh four zero zero three, point oh seven acres. Request rezoning from diverse residential DR dash two F to commercial transitional CT. Mr. Morgan?
Hi. I don't need to recuse myself from this. Chloe, so I, how do I, do I just leave?
I will remove you from the meeting and then Philip will text you when it's time to return and you can just use the same link to rejoin.
And the, and the record reflect that Ms. Harrison has reclusive herself for this application, rezoning number four. Mr. Morgan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a property that I think you all are very, very familiar with. It's been before you a few times. I'm going to orient you to the map that's in front of you. This is Coming Street here going one way towards the September Clark Parkway, which is US seventeen. It is the final parcel on the right side before you can make the right turn onto seventeen and ultimately I twenty-six. It's in a block that is a residential block here. You see the DR two F across the street. And DR two F on the same side of the street as the subject property. There is an older commercial corner store on the corner here. And then Line Street has a little bit more of a mix of, of uses. But, but once you get past this one little store here, it is exclusively a residential area. Apologies, let me turn this phone off. Sorry about that. And the applicant does want to rezone from the DR two F to commercial transitional. This is, you know, in the Cannonboro, Elliottboro area. That is also something because of becoming a commercial use, commercial zoning, that would allow for short-term rental on the property. Just to give some background on the property, I'm going to read off some dates. This has been to DZA a couple of times for some use variances. Those were not granted. On May fifteenth of twenty nineteen, Planning Commission voted five to two to recommend disapproval of a rezoning to GB, to City Council. On June eighteenth of twenty nineteen, City Council voted unanimously to disapprove rezoning to GB. On January fifteenth of twenty twenty, Planning Commission voted three to two to recommend disapproval of rezoning CT to City Council. On February twenty-fifth of this year, the rezoning request to CT was placed on City Council agenda but deferred by the applicant prior to the meeting. On May fifteenth of twenty twenty, the applicant withdrew, withdrew the rezoning request to CT prior to hearing City Council. And then now on June seventeenth, they are up for this CT zoning. So obviously a lot has been going on with this and hopefully the applicant can give a little bit more background to the repeated requests here. I'm going to move through and to show some other images here. Here you see the Cannonboro, Elliottboro neighborhood. And you see how this is a very residential block here, as are these other blocks. And, and what is so, so concerning to our staff with this type of request is that, you know, in all likelihood, it is a request to allow for short-term rental. And if this one were able to go commercial for short-term rental, that would mean essentially any of these other properties in the neighborhood could go to short-term rental. And I think you're going to hear tonight from folks in the neighborhood who are very, very concerned about proliferation of short-term rentals. And, and our staff feels very strongly that this is, this, if we have one single property, go from residential designation to commercial, that we will have dozens and dozens of requests. You all have already seen and turned down, I believe, a request on Felix Street in the past and of course this one before. So there clearly is a lot of interest in doing this in the neighborhood. But overall, the neighborhood seems to have a lot of concerns about the proliferation of short-term rentals. I'm going to progress through these slides. It is in the Century Five Plan as urban, which is, you know, very common for a neighborhood like Cannonboro, Elliottboro. But you see how the entire neighborhood here is designated for urban. Let me get my cursor over there. Sorry, I got my cursor off here, but you see this, this whole area that's in the tan is showing as urban. And I will show the subject parcel from an aerial and again residential structures. Now there's commercial zoning back here, but these are all residential structures too. These are all residential structures. This is a church. I believe there's a cemetery in this area here. So that area is not going to be built on. There are other new residential uses here. There are mixed residential, commercial and portions of Line Street, but exclusively residential here at the upper end. I believe that is Ash Street. Let's go on to some other images we have of the area. Here is a closer in aerial, you see the September Clark Parkway. This yellow box should actually be around this subject parcel here because it is the last parcel on the, on the street here before you get to the cross town. But you see the residential nature of the houses here, the residential nature of the houses on Saint, Upper Saint Philip Street. We'll go on to another image here. This is the subject property here. Now, one thing I wanted to point out here also, because I think we've heard from the applicant that parking is fairly limited here. And you see that the parking space on the right here is a very limited space. All the land that is grassy here where this garbage can is over to the parkway is owned by South Carolina Department of Transportation. However, I think that the, the SC DOT has had precedent of leasing areas for parking, provided that the proper terms are met, insurance, things like that. So I do think it is possible that the applicant, if they needed more parking for residential use on the site, could lease some of this area with work with SC DOT. They have approved leases for just down the street in the Shepherd and King Street area for a commercial project there. So it could be that, that with certain restrictions, residential parking could be included over here and would give more viability to the residential use on the property at present. Going to move on. Here are residential properties across the street. Again, you see exclusively residential across the street. Then we have here exclusively residential to the south of the subject property. Then we have an aerial property. I went and drove this area because having lived in Charleston for twenty-five, thirty years, I was aware of how close parcels are to the cross town and how that actually is not that unusual in Charleston. And I found multiple properties along the cross town that actually have had recent renovations, very high quality renovations, despite being immediately adjacent to the cross town, despite having very, very limited parking. So I do not think that the case can be made that this property has a unique situation. I think this property shares its situation with many other properties in the area that have been attractively and fundamentally renovated and still are very, very viable residential uses along the cross town. I have another image here. Here we see some of these parcels. This is right near Ashley Avenue where you have a similar one-way situation that very attractive properties with very, very limited parking are still doing very well and have residential tenants in them. This is a new residential structure here, very limited parking, much closer actually to the park, to the cross town than the applicant's property. And another property that is very close to the cross town, I think closer than the applicant's property. So the, the argument that's been stated in the past about this is this is not as unique a property as you might think. And properties along the cross town has shown repeatedly that they have residential value. The, this is the corner here and Ashley and the cross town. It shows the two parcels that are fronting very close to the cross town traffic here with very limited parking, yet they are in very good shape and good residential properties. Here we have a brand new construction, brand new construction, multi-hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure quite what the value was in this, but it was a very high value right here on the cross town with very. but it was a very high value right here on the cross town with very limited parking. So staff feels extremely strongly that this is an inappropriate change to this area and will create a dramatic change to the entire Cannonboro, Elliottboro neighborhood if it is granted, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do we have the applicant here to speak?
Okay, hold on one second. Let me promote our applicant to panelist. Okay, Mr. Andrews, you should be able to unmute yourself and share video if you'd like.
Thank you, Chloe. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Andrews. I'm an attorney here in Charleston, where I've practiced for about 40 years. I represent in this proceeding the homeowner, the applicant, Blake Leinberger. And I appreciate the opportunity to again be before the commission. I appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Morgan has done. It's obvious that the city has taken an interest in this property, and I, quite honestly, am a little bit surprised at the level of apparent passion that the city has for this. Mr. Morgan seems to think, certainly is suggested by his chuckling to the commission, that there's something inappropriate about coming back before this commission. To be perfectly honest, it reminds me a little bit of the, the parable that we find at Luke 18, of the persistent widow, who again and again comes before the king until she gets justice. There's a reason I'm here today with Mr. Leinberger. I'm not expecting any presents or birthday wishes, but today's my birthday. This is probably the first time in 35 years I haven't been fishing or playing or doing something other than sitting in my office at six o'clock at night to, to vouch for and to speak on behalf of a client. This is very important, and with the commission's indulgence, I'm going to address those things that do distinguish this property very clearly from any other property in the peninsula city. I do take issue with, with the properties that Mr. Morgan just spoke to. Every one of those properties has a no-turn-on red sign. Every one of those properties has extensive off-street parking. Every one of those properties is profoundly distinguishable from 276 Coming Street. Just some of the things that I'll point out again to the commission, and for those members of the commission that were not with us last time, I had an opportunity to address these things. This property sits at what is, I believe, and I think the data of the DOT would confirm this, as the busiest intersection in any residential community in the city of Charleston. For instance, as compared with Cannon Street alone in the same period of time, and I think we're talking about a day period, 64,000 vehicles pass this intersection at Cannon and Cross Town. Excuse me, Coming, Cross Town is compared to Cannon Street, which has 5,800. More than 10 times as many vehicles pass this residence. This residence sits as the last property. It's probably a property that you're all familiar with, notwithstanding and not because of the application passed. It's because you've driven by there. Virtually every time you go to Mount Pleasant, you choose several different corridors to take, and Coming is probably the most heavily trafficked of all. This is the last property on the right-hand side before you get to the on-ramp to the Ravenel Bridge. Furthermore, let me address the question that, that Mr. Morgan raised about the possible parking in the grassy lot. Mr. Leinberger has already approached DOT about that. They will not do a curb cut on an on-ramp. There is no access to that grassy area. There is room for parking off-street, one vehicle, one vehicle. Just in the last year, a new sign has been erected in front of this residence that says no parking. So there's no off-street parking at all. This property, and the reason we're here tonight is out of necessity. There is no practical other use for this property. This property would never qualify as a residential property now as a family residence. It wouldn't work in that regard. Mr. Morgan, if you're shopping for a piece of property, you can get this one real cheap. My clients had it listed for the last year and a half for now almost $100,000 less than he paid for it. He's willing to take a hit if he has to, can't sell it. He's had it put up for long-term rental since October of 2018 with not one bite, not one taker. It doesn't have enough parking to accommodate a group of College of Charleston students, or anyone else for that matter. It doesn't work. For what it's worth, and we'll hear probably from someone speaking on behalf of the historic community, this property is north or west, if you will, of Line Street. It's above Line Street. It's not in the historic district. It's not in the old city district. It's unique in that regard. It's also important to point out that there was a time when there was a commercial use of this property. It was a boarding house many years ago. The efforts that Mr. Leinberger has made have been persistent and genuine, and they've confirmed that this property, its only practical use is for short-term rental. And to suggest to the commission that it would be unique in this neighborhood environment is absolutely misleading. If you look on St. Philip Street, the property that backs up absolutely to his property line, those properties, that's a short-term rental property. It's all zone, general business. We've got MU1 right there on Line Street that also almost abuts his property. The property at the corner, that would be the southwest corner of Coming and Line Street, was rezoned to commercial transitional just several years ago. I would propose, with all due respect, that this is a compelling situation. The, the expressed concern of the city that this would be of some precedential nightmare for either this commission or of the city's concern is absolutely misleading. This property is unique. It's clearly unique to anyone that with open eyes would look at it and consider the physical aspects of this property and the use aspects. The property on Felix Street is nothing like this. That application was rejected some months ago, as it should have been rejected. It is in the middle of a high-end residential area that has on-street parking and off-street parking. This situation is one that's compelling, and if not granted, eventually, this property will fall into disrepair. This is arguably the last property in the city of Charleston that many of our visitors are going to see as they leave our city. It's not what we want to see. This grant of zoning change would be absolutely consistent with the city's best interest. It would be absolutely consistent with the neighborhood's best interest, and is clearly in the best interest of the owner. Thank you. I appreciate your giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Mr. Leinberger. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, and certainly I'd like the, the opportunity to respond further if there are members of the community that speak against this request.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Morgan, is, are there people that want to speak or to any statements in favor of the application you'd like to read into the record?
Hi.
Or Chloe?
Yes, we, yes, we have two people signed up to speak in opposition. No one signed up to speak in favor, so I'm going to...
Okay.
Hold on one second to find them. So Marion Hawkins is the first person. So, okay, Marion Hawkins, you should be able to speak now.
Oh, yes.
We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you for your time. I am, my name's Marion Hawkins. I'm president of the Cannonboro, Elliottboro Neighborhood Association. This owner is a real estate investor. This is one of two or three properties he owns as investments. He has a real estate license and purchases property, I think, in September of 2017, and he has operated illegally as a short-term rental prior to the city increasing their enforcement of the new short-term ordinance. He is previous legal counsel, presented to our neighborhood association over a year or so ago, and the, the neighborhood association voted unanimously to deny his application to upzone. Our neighborhood is very unique. We, if you look at the overall, the overall zoning map, you will see that we have mainly the commercial corridors of Spring and Cannon Street, parts of St. Philip's that are commercial, and the rest of the, of the neighborhood is residential, primarily DR-2F. And we have a unique, delicate balance, and there's many commercially zoned properties that are available. Some have been activated as short-term, some have not. And when many people are searching our neighborhood and want to, want to do short terms, we always encourage them to buy the zoning property with the zoning they need. This owner has a real estate license, would have done his homework, and it sounds like it was just a bad financial investment. The, our, our concern is that a precedent would be set. There's plenty of houses in that block that are residential and are fine. One, one was just purchased recently below it and is, is operating. And I think being right on the cross town, they have great visibility. To touching the point of the boarding house as a historical thing, a boarding house was a residential use. It was never a commercial use. And that MU property below on Line Street also has workforce housing. And one concern I have is, is the council that's presenting now reached out to me several months ago about, about this appeal, and he, he said, if we can't get this upzone, we'll have to, we'll have to resort to do Section 8 housing. And I was, I, I said, we would welcome Section 8. We have, throughout our neighborhood, we have Section 8 housing, and the residents are a vital, important part of our neighborhood. We need more affordable housing. So I encouraged his council, if you cannot, for some reason, you're, you have it priced right to sell, or you don't have the, the, the rent too high for regular rentals, even though there are plenty of rentals that are operational around them, I would encourage Section 8, because we, we definitely need that in our residents. Many of our, many of our residents are Section 8 and are a vital part of the diversity of our neighborhood. I, I probably will echo a lot of comments you will hear from our neighborhood residents, that we're kind of exhausted after we have had to speak against this appeal, this applicant, five times, and they've been defeated five times, twice at BZA, twice at Planning Commission, and once at City Council. So again, we ask you to help protect our neighborhood. We have a balance. The zoning works the way it is in place. This fits the city's comprehensive plan, and this would set a terrible precedent. And so we would ask the, the commission to, to turn down this application, but also we would ask you, I would ask you personally to unanimously defeat this request, because it's become almost, it could become very exhausting to, to us, and it's taken resources and time of many individuals. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Chloe, there's one other person wanting to speak?
Yes. Okay. Anna Catherine, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Anna Catherine Carroll with the Preservation Society of Charleston. The Preservation Society stands with the Cannonboro, Elliottboro Neighborhood Association in opposition to the rezoning of 276 Coming Street. We would first like to underscore that since the Planning Commission's most recent denial of this application in January, nothing has changed to warrant your reconsideration of the same request. In considering the potential effects on the character of the neighborhood, it is important to note that this block of Coming Street is zoned entirely DR-2F, ensuring residential use. When the short-term rental overlay was created in the Cannonboro, Elliottboro neighborhood in 2012, great care was taken to ensure historically residential areas remained predominantly residential. Over the past several years, the short-term rental industry has grown to place incredible pressure on the residential housing stock and affordability of this neighborhood, making the preservation of existing residential use all the more important. A balance of uses is essential to the health and livability of this neighborhood, and adding properties to the allowable district for commercial short-term rental use directly threatens that balance. So we would ask that you disapprove this request. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Mr. Morgan, are there comments that you need to read into the record? I see some things here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So I'll, I'll start going through those now. The first is from Joe Cannon at 209 Ashley Avenue. She says, "I ask that this request be denied. I've lived in this neighborhood almost 40 years. Once you allow this zoning change, every single property owner will ask for the same thing. They too will want this upgrade. They would be fools not to. The person knew the status of this property when he bought it. If he wanted to change the status, he should have asked, he should have asked about the change before he purchased the property." Robert Holt at 6 Tully Alley says, "This is approximately the sixth time this request has come before the Planning Commission. All previous times you have rejected the rezoning, and Cannonboro, Elliottboro Neighborhood Association unanimously rejected support for this application. The applicant has since he purchased the property appeared as an illegal short-term rental and claimed at the neighborhood meeting that, given the dangerous nature of the September Clark Highway, the cross town, the only viable use would be having tourists there. It is the exact opposite. The property is surrounded by long-term residents, and that is the safest use. I remember friends of mine living in this property some 40 years ago. We do not need rezonings of DR-2F properties into commercial zoning of any kind. Our neighborhood has sufficient commercial zoning, primarily in the Spring and Cannon corridor and on St. Philip Street, with corner stores sprinkled here and there. We have achieved a balance, and this rezoning request is illogical and ill-advised in the entire city, ill-advised for the entire city, except the owner, who has already shown disdain and disregard for his neighbors. This is not the only property in our neighborhood he operated as a short-term rental illegal." The next item is from Courtney Wagner, Wagner at 257 Rutledge Avenue. "I object to this rezoning. I find it ridiculous that this neighbor can make the same application now for the sixth time. The property is best remaining DR-2F, just as all the surrounding properties are. This application is an example of a greedy person who cares not a whit for the neighborhood or the city and only himself. He routinely defies city ordinances by operating illegal short-term rentals in our neighborhood, despite being asked to stop by both the neighborhood and the city. His property is for sale, and this application is all about him making money on the sale and not what is best for the neighborhood. Please deny this for a sixth time." Charles M. Waring at 3612 West Higgins Drive, Mount Pleasant, says, "Many operators, owners of SDR properties in Elliottboro, Cannonboro neighborhood paid a premium for property zone commercials so that they could meet the requirements for whole property rentals. As such, it's not right for others to purchase a residentially zoned property to convert said property to SDR later, requesting commercial zoning. Buyer beware comes to mind. Also, I feel there's a good mix of SDR properties already in our community, and changing zoning to allow for more would not be positive for our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of my comments." Cater Sparks at 118 Spring Street says he opposes the proposal. Eric Meckley at 209 opposes the proposal. Eric Meckley at 277 Coming says, I own and live at a neighboring property, 277 Coming Street, and I request that the city deny this request again. The property was previously being run illegally as an Airbnb, and my neighbors and I have a ton of issues with guests not respecting the property or the fact that neighbors may want to sleep at night. I believe this is the sixth time this request has been made, and since the last few times, nothing about the property has changed or marked rezoning. The owner has previously stated that he could not find tenants as a long-term rental as an excuse, but now it is being rented. They also argued that no other properties on the block were really lived in, but since then, one vacant property has been renovated and has residents, and another is currently being renovated with the intention to become a primary residence for the owner. After living on this block for three years, I can finally say that I know my neighbors and that there are no illegal Airbnbs on my block. And I would like to keep it that way since the neighborhood, the neighborly feel of this part of the city is a primary reason why my wife and I chose this location to live in. There are plenty of other Airbnbs in the neighborhood, and I am afraid of setting a precedent for property owners to rezone like this, and it will hollow out, hollow out the neighborhood to become an area of hotels with absentee property managers. Jason Coy at 31 Bogard Street says, the owner of 276 Coming Street in Cannonboro-Elliottboro is seeking to rezonate this property from diverse residential DR2F to commercial transitional. Request has been heard multiple times by zoning, and each time has been denied after strong opposition with Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association, the Preservation Society, and the Star of Charleston Foundation. As a homeowner in Cannonboro-Elliottboro, I urge Planning Commission to reject this rezoning request. It would lead the property to being turned into a short-term rental with detrimental effects on the neighborhood and the city and long-term zoning plans. The Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood has worked for years along with the city to maintain a delicate balance between homeowners, renters, and businesses, and this sort of request threatens to upset this balance by converting a residence to a business and by bringing the noise, trash, parking issues of an SDR into a primary residential block. Please turn down this rezoning request in order to preserve the livability of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That includes all the comments. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Andrews, would you like to respond to the comments?
Am I still on mute?
I just unmuted you, Mr. Andrews.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. It brings to mind the property that Ms. Lampisus directed everyone's attention to last time we were before the commission. That's at 9 Wesley Drive. Just because the commission fails to grant a request doesn't mean they're doing the right thing, with all due respect. That request was before the commission for years and years and years until after the, the, that owner passed away, and then it was ultimately granted. And I'm sure you all are familiar with where Wesley Drive comes in the folly road and know the property there. It's where Stuart found his law offices today. So please excuse me for being back here again today. But my client has a right to be heard, and he will be back again and again and again because I have examined this. I don't waste my time on frivolous matters. And while I don't have a say-so in the vote on this matter, I've been a member of our community for my entire life, and I know the city of Charleston. And I do have an opinion about what's right and what's not right, and what's good for the city and what's not. And I'm not on the commission. But to suggest that granting this would create an avalanche of negative precedential value is just misleading. To suggest that this is a proper family residential property in the middle of a neighborhood, and if this request is granted, would change the flavor, the delicate balance, as Mr. Hawkins has said, of the neighborhood, is just misleading. It's not. It is the right thing. This commission's responsibility is not just to safeguard the interests of the city or safeguard the interests of the neighborhood, but it's to consider every applicant as unique, to look at every property, to really weigh the merits of every question. And forgive me for suggesting what your responsibilities are. I know you understand them better than I do. But I would not be here again. And this is not the fifth time, and it is not the sixth time. It is the third time in front of this commission. And it's because it is a meritorious position. It's not going to affect the neighborhood. It is the only practical use of this property. Mr. Leinberger, good to his word, will reach out to see if he could get a Section 8 authorization. He's gotten no response to that. He's looking for any possible use of this property. And without this zoning request being granted, there is no practical use of this property. You know, the sign, they said, well, nothing's changed. Well, number one, he didn't have his real estate license when he purchased his property. No excuse. He's charged with knowledge of this, even though it is somewhat misleading, misleading when you look at the map and it falls within the, the parameters of the short-term rental overlay. But that's on him. He made a mistake. But they did take away, the city took away his on-street parking within the last year. There is no parking, and without parking, there is no use unless you use Uber, unless you use commercial transportation, which of course, we know that the vast majority of those people that come into Charleston for brief periods of stay do avail themselves of. That is the only practical use here. It is a necessitous situation. I appreciate your time and putting up with me. You know, it's just what I believe is the right thing, and I do appreciate you all considering this unique application and voting in favor of the requested approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We thank you and appreciate your comments. That's going to close the public aspect of this. Now, ask commission members, comments, questions, motions.
Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Lassane both had their hands raised.
Mr. Lassane?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just simply like to refer everyone to my comments at the last two meetings that this matter has come before us, and I would like to move for disapproval of the request.
Okay, there's a motion to deny the request by Mr. Lassane. Let's second, more comments, questions. Ms. Jacobs, you had your hand up. I'm sorry.
I'll second Harry's motion because I've got the code in front of me, and I have, and I'm going to read the statement because I call it a do-no-harm statement responsibility of the Planning Commission. Whenever we're considering a change in the zoning ordinance or the zoning map, we should determine the possible effects of the change in the ordinance or map on the character of a zone district, a particular piece of property, a neighborhood, or the community. And we had some discussion at the last meeting about spot zoning, and just to understand that, I looked it up, and this is the definition I got. The classic definition of spot zoning is a process of singling out a small parcel of land for used classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of the other owners. We didn't hear anybody in support of this application. And I, if there is this interest in Section 8 housing, I know that Ms. Gianna Shaw Johnson of the city works with our Affordable Housing Unit, and maybe somebody needs to promote a dialogue between her and this homeowner because maybe there are some out-of-the-box thinking for this property that could be done, and that would seem to be encouraged by the Neighborhood Association. So I will second Harry's motion.
So there's a motion to second, more comments, questions, or commission members?
Ms. Johnson's raising her hand.
Ms. Johnson, please.
I just want to reiterate my comments before. I feel like this is a very unique property. I feel like it's situated differently than the properties that we've used as comparison, and I am going to vote against the motion on the floor, but I just wanted to share my comments once again.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comments, and we appreciate them. Any other comments, questions?
Ms. Lampisus is raising her hand.
Hey, Ms. Lampisus, you go ahead.
Yes, I kind, I would like to agree with, excuse me, with Ms. Johnson. What is the property on the corner of Line Street that says "commercial transitional"? What are those two properties right there where your cursor is, Christopher?
This is, this is a former office or commercial building that was rezoned a couple, in the last year to two years. It was just basically the footprint of the building itself, which is in keeping with the staff's recommendation that we would only support commercial rezonings in this neighborhood if they were formally used as commercial structures. There is also a commercial former corner store in this location here that is ZONCT.
Okay, thank you. I really do believe this, this is a unique property. I have driven by it, and I did compare it to the 100 Wesley Drive. I don't think it's going to be an issue with short-term rental because you don't have any parking to allow that. And I just really believe that, that putting a no parking sign in front of anybody's property really diminishes the value of it, both from a single-family residential and even a rental. Really, the only people that would possibly use that house would be short-term renters. So I'm probably going to vote against that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lampisus. Other comments, questions, or commission members? I'll chime in and say that this is a very unique piece of property. We all know that. It's in a unique area, and my concern does come in with the precedent, and if we rezone it, that my concern is that I have heard that, and do see that there would be a wave of others would come in with that, and I think that would be bad for the entire neighborhood as well as this property as well. So I intend to support the motion to deny the application. Other comments, questions, or commission members? If not, do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I vote to deny the application.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Ms. Harrison?
That's a recusal there, Mr. K-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Harrison's... Dr. Irons?
I vote to deny the application.
Thank you, Dr. Irons. Ms. Jacobs?
I vote to deny.
Ms. Johnson?
Not sure how to phrase this, but I vote nay against the motion on the floor, so I, I am opposed to it.
Okay, we got you. We got you for the record that you're opposed to the, the motion to deny. Ms. Lampisus?
I vote nay. Excuse me.
Okay. Mr. Lassane?
I vote aye in favor of the motion.
Deny. Mr. Flue?
I vote in the motion to say no. I agree with Angie Johnson, so whatever her statement was, I kind of...
So you are, you're a, you're in, just to clarify, you're in, in favor of the motion deny or opposed to the motion to deny?
Angie, what was yours?
It was confusing, so I just said that I'm, I am opposed to the motion on the floor, which is to deny the application.
Okay. So, Mr. Flue?
I vote to deny the application.
You vote to deny the application?
Yes. No, the other one. I'm sorry. I'm totally confused.
You vote, you vote, I'm sorry, you voted deny. You're voting against the motion, correct? So you're against the motion to deny is what you are? Okay, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we get it for the record.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it's a little, and I'm in favor of the motion to deny. So, Mr. Morgan, I think we have one, two-
Three to recommend denial of the recommendation, of the rezoning request.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on. That completes, that completes rezonings. We're going to move on to, sorry, I'm losing my spot here, but I think it is property conversion, number one. Joby Drive, Ashley Town Village, West Ashley, TMS number 3581600218, approximately .196 acres, request conversion of property designation from common area to building site, zoned diverse family residential DR1 classification. Mr. Morgan, we don't see many, many of these. Can you go through this for us, please?
Right, we don't. I believe Ms. Harp or Mr. Bachelder are going to present this item.
Okay. Whoever's, whoever is, we're ready for them.
Okay.
Okay. This is on Harp. And yes, you're correct. You don't see too many of those. The reason why you see this is because the ordinance states that if a common area parcel needs to be, wants to be converted into a buildable site, has to be approved by the Planning Commission. To remove the status of a common area into a buildable site has to come in front of you. This is the second one that we have seen since I've been working with you. So this one is located, as you said, on Joby Drive, the corner of Joby and Treetop Court. It's in the Ashley Town Village neighborhood. The, on the plot that you're seeing there, it was recorded on August 1983, and the lot in question is labeled "common area." The owner of the property wishes to remove that common area denomination into a buildable site so they can build a single-family residence on the property. The property is on DR1F, and the minimum lot area for a residential lot is 4,000 square feet. The lot is about 8,500 square feet. It's important to note that there is a 35-foot drainage easement on the rear of the property, right here. If you can see that on the rear, like right next to the SENG Dominion Energy easement, and there is a 17 and 1/2 drainage easement on the other side. So they have about 3,300 square feet of buildable area. The, another thing important to note is that even though the drainage easements are not going anywhere, so even though if the lot is converted into a buildable lot, stormwater will have the right to come into the property and do work if that is what is required. Staff does not have any reason to object to the conversion to a buildable site, and we recommend approval. So that, you can see right there where the property is.
Sorry.
Another...
And then the plot, there we go.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here to speak, or do they want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let me promote her to panelists. Okay. Ms. Bogatkovich, you should be able to unmute yourself and share your video, video if you'd like.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Yes, so I am owner of the property, and despite it's shown as a common area on the plot, it was never used as a common area, and this neighborhood has common area right above the corner, like 100 yards away. And all neighbors are very friendly, and they do consider this property as a privately owned, as mine property, not as HOA, and all of them in support of building single-family home. So I don't know what else to say.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Do we have any comments? Ms. Harp, do we have any comments, positive or concerns from the public you know of?
No, sir. We received some, the applicant went around the neighborhood and got some signatures from neighbors, and everybody was in favor of a new home being built on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, there were, there were three, there were three written comments that were submitted into the record. Christopher stepped away from his desk, so I'll just...
Okay.
For the record, they're all the same. The language is the same for all of them, but the, I'll, I'll read the, the names of everyone and their addresses. Let me skip to...
If you don't have them, I have them.
Oh, you, this letter is to confirm that Council J. Gregory and Libby Tierra, residents of 2734 Treetop Court, do not mind MGB invest to build a single-family house on the parcel at the corner of Joby Drive and Treetop Court. Please note that you have to obtain from the City of Charleston Department of Planning all necessary permits before starting any construction-associated activities. So similar letter, but with Stopler Theresa, resident of- So similar letter, but with Stopler Theresa, resident of 2805 Joby Drive, son of Philip Reader-- Renter? I can't-- Handwritten. And then there are five residents that signed a similar letter, similar language, looks like Griffin Hill, 2806 Joby Drive, Mark Turnbill, 2739 Tree Top Court, Dale Fish, 2335 Tall Sail Drive, Christian D., 2809 Joby, and Ryan Scott, 2327 Treescape Drive.
Great. Is that all? That's all the comments we have or support?
Correct.
Great. So unless we want to hear from the applicant again, we'll close the public aspect of this. Commission members, comments, motion, questions?
Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Ms. Jacobs?
I have a question, if anybody can answer this. Because it's surrounded by the drainage ditches that appear to function maybe for this development, does the property itself-- Does anybody know how it holds water? I'm very concerned that, you know, we would zone into something that would be buildable, and then they're going to build something on a piece of property that, in conjunction with those drainage ditches, manages water for the area. Do we have any sense of that?
Ms. Harp, do we have anything, or Chloe?
I spoke with Stormwater-- Stormwater this afternoon about that, and they-- What Kinsey said-- Kinsey Holton expressed was that those will just remain drainage easements. He did not know how the water is held on the property. So that was probably the something that might need a little more investigating by the owner if you know how that happens.
Well, since it's such a--
They would have to-- Go ahead. I'm sorry. Would they have to get any kind of approval before they built on the property regarding drainage?
They-- The requirements that they cannot encroach into the drainage easement. They will have to require-- They require a single-family new approval, which reviewed by zoning, engineering, GIS, and building inspections. Everybody will look at-- And there is a lot inspection that is conducted by engineering for a single-family new lot. Every single-family application that we receive, somebody from engineering goes to the lot, and those an investigation-- An inspection of the lot to see if they can approve it.
That would include drainage, I'm assuming?
I would believe so. Don't want to say yes for sure, because I am not 100% sure.
It's just such a small parcel to build on that we start covering it with a footprint of a building and then a driveway and anything else, that I don't want to see it start impacting the owner itself. I mean, it seems like there's drainage system there. I'm more concerned about the person who might buy the home that would be put on that piece of property, that they would have a constant drainage issue. So it gives me a little bit of pause to think about allowing that to proceed forward. I'm not going to make a motion at this time. I'd like to hear some other comments.
Mr. LaSane has his hand raised?
Hey, Mr. LaSane?
Sure, yeah. And I-- Just to-- On that, my home has a drainage easement to the rear-- On the rear portion of the lot, and that is simply an avenue for the water to travel to a catch basin, which is also in the back corner of my lot. So the drainage easement doesn't mean that there's a drainage problem necessarily. It just means that that land is dedicated to stormwater use. So, you know-- And because this will have to go through the city process to ensure that it meets all the stormwater regulations, I will vote-- Or, excuse me, move to approve this motion-- Or this application.
Thank you, Mr. LaSane. Other comments? A second?
Ms. Lepus has her hand raised.
Ms. Lepus?
Christopher, what are the setbacks on this lot, front and side and rear?
There is no front setback, and I knew you were going to ask me that, so I don't have-- I don't have that memorized. Lee, if you can help, that'd be great. I know you have it memorized. I do not. Give me just one second, and I will find it for you.
Thank you, hon.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Bachelder, I see you there. Do you want to answer that, or?
Yes, I can answer that question. The setbacks for DR1 are-- The rear setback is irrelevant because of the easement in the back of the lot, but there's no front setback that's required. And there's a minimum nine-foot setback on one side and a minimum three-foot on the other, and the total side setbacks-- The total of those two side setbacks has to equal 15 feet.
Great. Ms. Lepus, does that answer your question?
Yes, that does. I was just concerned about the front setback and that being truly a lot, but I will second Mr. LaSane's motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. LaSane, and a second by Ms. Lepus. Other comments, questions, or commission members? If not, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Ms. Jacobs, just to make sure, you didn't have any other comments, did you?
No, I mean, I'm not sure that this lot will go under stormwater review, and I'm just concerned that somebody will build a house and then have a stormwater problem for themselves. That's my only concern.
I got you. We're going to go ahead and since there's a motion, a second. Mr. Bailey?
I approve.
Ms. Harrison?
I approve-- Approve the motion.
Thank you. Dr. Irons?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
I'm going to say nay.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, I'm in favor.
Ms. Lepus?
Aye in favor.
Mr. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye in favor.
And I'm in favor of the motion as well, so I guess that's eight to one, if whoever's keeping tally. Now, under subdivisions, number one, which is Oakville Plantation, America Star, Johns Island, TMS 3170000011-055-089, approximately 201.6 acres, 205 lots, request one extension to subdivision concept plan, Zone Rural Residential or Light Industrial L1. I'm not trying to lead anyone, but I know there's been questions about this. Do we want to--
May I make a motion to go into the executive session?
Is that Ms. Harrison? Yes, ma'am. So there's a motion by Ms. Harrison to go into executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Jacobs, you second? Sorry. Okay. Well, why don't we do a roll call vote, just to make sure we're all in line? Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Harrison? I'm assuming you are since you made the motion, but I just want to make sure.
Aye. I am in favor.
Dr. Irons?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Lepus?
Aye in favor.
Mr. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye in favor.
And I'm in favor as well. Chloe, can you just tell us, just to-- So we're all on the same page, and so the public knows where we're doing here as we go into executive session?
Yes, so what I will do is I'm going to mute everyone-- All of the commissioners' audio and turn off all of their videos, and the commissioners will be calling into a separate conference line for executive session, and we'll have a placeholder slide up for the public, so you all-- All of the attendees can remain in the meeting until the commissioners are done with executive session. And then when they return, we'll resume video and audio for everyone.
And that number, just so-- And you sent it out to everyone earlier, so everyone should have an 800 number as well as an access code, correct, Chloe?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman--
Go ahead.
Everybody who's watching this meeting and listening to this meeting is that no action would be taken in this executive session. It's for legal advice only.
Thank you.
At any time, you will now be placed into office.
Christopher, y'all let me know you and Chloe when we've got everybody back on board and we can move on.
All right, I'm back. We're back where we're supposed to. Well, let's see, I gotta back up a little bit more here. There we go. Okay.
It's like we got all the commissioners.
Because I believe Anna is going to present this.
Okay.
Is Anna, there is Anna, okay. All commissioners back in now, it looks like.
Yep, so Mr. Lassane, do you have, or there was a motion, is there, I want to entertain a motion from a commission member?
Mr. Chairman, I would say without objection, we should return from executive session into.
Mr. Lassane taking that motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second, it's Angie.
Ms. Johnson seconds, all in favor, Sigma Phi Phi saying aye, I'm not gonna call roll unless there's an objection, all in favor, Sigma Phi Phi saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Okay, just as a, just as a point, we went in executive session, we got some legal opinion, no decisions were made in executive session, and we are now out of executive session for the motion, and we're gonna go to the, as we already announced into the record, that number one subdivision request Oakville Plantation. Who, I'm sorry, Chris, you told me that.
Ms. Harp, Ms. Harp is gonna give the.
Yeah, Ms. Harp, would you go ahead, whenever you're ready?
You will remember, you will remember one of these days.
I will, I'm sorry.
Well, this is the American Star Oakville Plantation Road in Johns Island, this proposed subdivision is located on Johns Island off of River Road, north of the Johns Island Airport, the applicant is seeking a one-year extension of the concept plan approval granted by the Planning Commission on April 18th of 2018 with certain conditions. This is the first request for a one-year extension of this approval, staff recommendation is for the concept plan approval granted on April 18th of 2018, extended for one year to April 18th of 2021 with the same conditions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chloe, do we have the applicant available, then I guess we're gonna hear from the applicant?
Yes. Okay. Sir Todd Richardson, you should be able to unmute yourself now and share your video if you would like.
Good evening, how's everyone doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, my name is Todd Richardson, I'm a landscape architect and principal with Synchronicity here in Charleston. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners and staff for hearing our extension request this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, it's a fairly straightforward administrative legal extension, the first of five that we have in the provision of the code.
You go ahead, you wanna go ahead with your.
Yes, I'll just, I'll just summarize briefly, we, we went through the TRC pre-review and Planning Commission Concept Plan Approval, which was granted on April 18th of 2018. This property just historically was the joint combination of the Lackey and Horus family. And historically in the eighties, right around 1980, a major portion of the property was granted to a developer to develop Stono Point and redirect Burden Creek Road. Leftover from that subdivision and annexation and creation of that development was off of Burden Creek Road. And the properties were brought into the city as light industrial. Since that time, it has been the continued goal and legacy of Mr. Harland Lackey and his relatives to provide a neighborhood for families. And that is what we are doing here, we have worked with the families for several years for a reduction of zoning, lessening impacts, achieving a balance and removing an opportunity for impactful development. It's a 205-unit concept plan at a 2.55 dwelling unit per acre density. The use and density are compliant with the Century 5 Comprehensive Plan, it's a low-density neighborhood. Going forward, any proposed plans will be compliant with the new stormwater standards from the City of Charleston Stormwater Staff and Department. And that's really it for our presentation, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, do we have Mr. Morgan, anyone from staff, do we have any comments positive or anybody who wants to comment on this, anything recorded, anything we want to read into the record?
Uh, yes.
People who've signed up to speak, as well as several written comments.
Yes, so we, we don't have anyone signed up to speak in favor, we only have folks signed up in opposition, so Mr. Phil Dustin, I'm going to unmute you.
Let me, let me ask you, Chloe, let me, question, do we have any, any comments, favorable comments that we want to read to start, I mean, I'd just like to get them in order if we can, do we have any?
No.
Letters? Okay, all right.
Nothing, yeah, nothing in favor, only comments and people signing up to speak in opposition.
Okay, great, so we'll move forward, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dustin, you may go ahead and speak.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, first of all, thank you for hearing my comments, and I want to state for the record, I'm Philip Dustin, 2659 Burden Creek Road, Johns Island, I live in the Stono Point community, right next to this property, I am opposed to this extension for a large number of reasons, but there's first something that's very confusing going on right now. Number one, for the record, Oakville Plantation Road is really Jack Hill Road, which is an easement. And there, that's across lot 14A in the Stono Point Homeowners Association. And there is presently some disagreement about the use of that, and it's in the courts, moving, my community is being represented by Trenton Walker. And it's not really clear that the developer would be allowed to trespass on our property for commercial purposes, so we have that, but I'd like to go back to what Mr. Richardson said, that this community plan was first presented in 2017, it was 89 acres. And at that point, it started this issue between my community and the developer. And then in 2019, in July of 2019, a new plan called River Run was brought before the Planning Commission, I believe, and brought before, no, it was brought before City Council for annexation. And that required annexation of additional land and required a new road that would be cut onto River Road for the traffic. And that was deferred for a long time. And now we see some reversion back to this old plan with the addition of a three-acre lot called Lot 14A in my community. And what's curious is, the first plan was 89 acres with about 200 houses on it, and now this one is 201 acres. And all they've added is about a three-acre lot called Lot 14A. So this request is actually different from the past request. And, and we haven't had enough time to really analyze this, but it looks like they're just taking the old design, which they abandoned, and are now sort of re-boiling it as something that they would like to just have an extension, and it's just a, a normal extension, and that doesn't seem to be the case, this is really a new plan and should be considered as such, not just an extension of the old plan. So I, I'd like to go on the record that my community is adamantly opposed to this. The plan violates both the Johns Island Community Plan and the Dutch Dialogues and the Century 5 Plan, which in, which embodied the Johns Island Community Plan. There should be no developments of this sort below 15 feet elevation. And most of this land is actually below 10 feet, probably 90% of it or more is below 10 feet elevation. So right there, it, it's in opposition to everything we've been learning in the last year to Dutch Dialogues and flooding and everything else. So what we need to figure out is, first of all, what are they actually asking for? And this seems to be a new project. These, most of the land that's there is low-lying coastal land and marsh, and it floods now from storm surge, tropical storms during Matthew and Irma. And we also know that Burden Creek at that time becomes impassable during these storms, and this is the road that they're suggesting they're going to use as the principal road in and out for 200-plus houses, and River Run is somewhere on the order of 400 houses. So the whole use of this seems to be crazy in, in many respects. This low-lying area and this low-lying land is really better meant for water storage than building dense developments. I know Mr. Richardson calls this a development that is really low-density, but in fact, it's quite high-density. And, and violates, again, as I said, both the Johns Island Community Plan and the Dutch Dialogues. So what we're learning now is that we have flooding from two different sources that impact this land. One is storm surge, which comes in from the Stono River. And the other is the excess flooding that's now coming down through Burden Creek. And Burden Creek is really a complex, small river, it's not just a ditch that people think of as Burden Creek. And a large part of the meander of that small river abuts this property and is essentially separates this property from the other property that the developer wants to develop. So it's actually a part of Burden Creek, and therefore it's part of an estuary and environment. It's not just simply a tributary as suggested by the developer, it's titled wetlands. This area is going to require massive fill, a fill and build of this sort is extravagant. Even the retention ponds will be, have to be dug in filled dirt, because the land is not high enough to have the kind of retention ponds that you're talking about. And we're learning from our scientific studies now during this wet spring, that in fact, the retention ponds don't work. As soon as we get rain now with all the retention ponds full, the water just washes into Burden Creek. So building this community would be like putting a dam at the mouth of Burden Creek. And the water that's coming down now because of all the excess developments on Maybank would be blocked up, and it would divert that water onto Stono Point and other communities, so it creates a hazard. Essentially, it's, it's forcing flooding onto other communities such as Stono Point and Exchange Landing Road and Shoreline Farms. So what we're dealing with here is something that, as I thought was aptly said before, the Planning Commission should do no harm. This request should be denied because it's not just a continuing request, it's a new project with new ideas and new concepts in it. And it may be actually part of a larger project as well. And in doing that, what we're really doing is creating a hazard. The city would be essentially sanctifying the building of a hazard, both to the people that are going to live there, who would be cut off from emergency services during some sort of storm event, and the people that would be flooded out by this community neighboring. And this may very well act to have FEMA begin to reexamine what we're doing with our CRS rating, our community service rating, which actually gives everybody a discount on their flood insurance now. And by allowing communities like this to be built, which actually promote flooding, what we're doing is backing down on that CRS rating, which would cost everybody in Charleston, everybody more on their flood insurance, on the order of 10 or 20 or 30% more for their flood insurance. So I hope you deny this and have the developers come back with a concrete plan to tell us exactly what they're doing, and not just an extension on one piece, and not just piecemeal with some in the county and some in the city, and well, we don't really know what's happening. Please deny this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin, thank you, Mr. Dustin, for your comments. Chloe, who do we have next?
Next, we have Mr. Mark Brandonberg. Mr. Brandonberg, you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Are, are they able to see me or not?
No, just, just here.
Just here, okay, all right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to, to talk with y'all, my name is Mark Brandonberg, I am a resident of Johns Island, I live in Stono Point, which is the neighborhood that is just to the north of, of this proposal, and I'm a, I'm an attorney by, by education and, and by profession. So I, I think it's probably important for y'all to look at the ordinance, and I'm sure that y'all had an extended discussion with perhaps Mr. McQueenie or somebody else from Mr. Dina's office over the last few minutes. But where you're dealing with at this point is in Section 54-960 and, and the following ordinances in the city code. And, and it's important for you to look and see what that particular section says, which is that the purpose of, of this section of the code is to implement the provisions of South Carolina Code annotated 6-29-1510, so as to secure the reasonable expectation of landowners who make investment in site evaluation, planning, development costs, et cetera, et cetera. What that section is doing is, that, that section, what that particular paragraph is doing is, is it's calling out and going back to the South Carolina Code, which of course overlays all of the ordinance and provides your response, your duties and responsibilities in this particular proceeding. And so it's, it's important for you to look back at, at what the sections, what those sections say. And you would start, I think, at 6-29-340, which talks about the functions, powers, and duties of a local planning commission. Paragraph A says it's the function and duty of the local planning commission to undertake a continuing planning program for the physical, social, and economic growth, development, and redevelopment of the area within its jurisdiction. The plans and programs must be designed to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, prosperity, or the general welfare as well, as well as the efficiency and economy of its area of jurisdiction. There's several statutes that repeatedly talk about what your responsibilities are in this, in this kind of situation. 6-29-510 talks about the planning commission, the planning process, it says the local planning commission shall develop and maintain a planning process, which will result in the systematic preparation and continual reevaluation and updating of those elements considered critical, necessary, and desirable to guide the development and redevelopment of its area. It talks, it calls out several criteria that have to be in the comprehensive plan. These include a population element, which considers historic trends and projections, an economic development, an economic element, which consists, considers historic trends and projections, household numbers and sizes. And then third, a natural resources element, which considers coastal resources, slope characteristics, prime agricultural and forest land, plant and animal habitats, parks, recreation areas, scenic views and sights, wetlands, and soil types. You're supposed to have regulations. Your regulations should prescribe that no land development plan, including subdivision plots, will be approved unless all land intended for use of building sites can be used safely for building purposes without danger from flood or other inundation or from other menaces to health, safety, or public welfare, that's 629-1130. In other words, every one of the ordinances that calls out your responsibilities, it specifically talks about the, about the environmental, in particular, the drainage and the floodplain aspects of the property that's under your supervision, but you know this, of course, because one of the educational requirements that you have before you join the planning commission was to hear on a variety of topics, land use planning, zoning, and again, floodplain. So your job, your responsibility, under the particular statute that's in play right now, which is 6-29 -1540, that's the one that sets up conditions and limitations on permits and on renewing permits. That one says that a vested right is subject to the following conditions and limitations. Subparagraph seven says a vested right for a site-specific development plan expires two years after, after vesting. The land development regulation must authorize a process by which the landowner of real property with a vested right may apply at the end of the prior period for an annual extension. for an annual extension of the vested right. However, it says you can extend the time upon a determination there is just cause for extension and that the public interest is not adversely affected. Subparagraph 11 of the same section also talks about invested site-specific, invested site-specific development plan and when it can be extended. It says it is subject to later enacted federal, state, or local laws adopted to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And that's exactly what's happened here. Dr. Dustin talked a few minutes about the Dutch dialogues. Now, this application was approved two years ago in April of 2018 over our objections. It's up for renewal now, but what's happened in the interim is Mayor Teklenburg went out and hired a whole bunch of experts to come and study Charleston. One of the places they came to was Johns Island. One of the specific places they came to on Johns Island was this area. They looked at it and walked some of it. In April, or I'm sorry, in January of this year, City Council unanimously approved the Dutch dialogues. And if you look at the resolution, what they said is they said, we understand there is flooding in the foreseeable future. We see that it is increasing and has increased in the last few years. We engaged in a series of public meetings to research, explore, design, and propose integrative ways to mitigate and adopt adept flood conditions. And it calls out the areas that it looked at. I'm reading from the resolution that City Council adopted in January of this year. They unanimously adopted the Dutch dialogues. And so that raises the question of what they said. And Dr. Dustin went to, talked about it a little bit. But I would direct your attention to page 78 through 80 of the Dutch dialogues, which said, there are four planning or safety zones on Johns Island. The first wet zone is from zero to six feet above mean scene level, which coincidentally correlates with the impacts of the 10-year storm return period, which at this point has become the two-year storm period. Here's what they said. We recommend prohibiting future development in the wet zone. Marsh in this zone is essential for storm surge protection. In addition, marshland warrants robust, marshland warrants robust ecological protection and restoration. Then they talk about the next type of area, the ecological zone. The ecological zone exists from six to 10 feet. This is primarily salt marsh and low coastal forests, providing ecological connections, ecosystem services, and water storage sponge functions. Only limited and adapted development should occur in the ecological zone, such as low-density, pile-elevated, single-family homes. And they even included a nice chart on page 80, which talks about what ought to go in an area that's from zero to six feet in mean scene level and what in an area that's from six to 10 feet. But as Dr. Dustin said, all of this area is 10 feet or below. In other words, under the Dutch dialogues, all of this area should be limited to single-family elevated homes, not the 205 areas that they're trying to cram into the 89 areas, 89 acres of high ground that's on here. Again, the ordinances, the statutes, and your ordinance allow you to take into account changes in the law. As I said, City Council specifically and unanimously approved the Dutch dialogues. They've adopted them. Their expressed explanation of what's good and right for Johns Island and everywhere else. That's a change in the law that you should take into account. They cannot show, that is, Synchronicity and American Star cannot show that the plans that were adopted two years ago now comply with what City Council has specifically adopted. As a result, you should deny their application to extend the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandonberg. Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, Chloe.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson, your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you very much. Welcome back to your important work, planning commissioners. I, I am here to empathize with all of the good comments that I know the neighbors and the residents of Johns Island have been studying for years in relationship to this development. And then most especially after we finished the Dutch dialogues and realized that this, really, this location is the poster child of the kinds of changes that we will be making as a body of elected officials in reaction to what we know now about watersheds and the elevations that need to be respected. I, I empathize, as I said, I really wish that you could tonight do some more original thinking. But my goal, and, and let me back up and say that newly-elected Councilmember Carl Brady wanted to be here tonight. He had an obligation with family that he could not change. So I'm, I, I have his authorization. He said, call it my amicus relationship. So I'm speaking for Councilmember Brady and myself. I have been studying this development really since I decided to run for my elected seat in 2017. And I really have learned so much about the way the city processes land use and all of the activities that you all are part of, but not many times the end decision-makers. And I, I know that we still have the whole subdivision question to address with you all. So what I would like to focus on with you tonight, though, is the, the, the information that was provided to you in your packet does cite the, I guess, commonly accepted and looked at sections of our code 54-962, where basically, in a more generalized sense, it says that you can have site-specific development plans that are approved and that, that engenders a two-year vested right for that particular site plan. I find it very interesting that Dr. Dustin is now calling attention to, is honestly, the same amount of property that was approved. But I'll leave that to another deliberation. Basically, this, if, if you just stopped at 54-962, it is pretty clear that the developer has the right to ask for an extension up to five times, one year at a time. But what I think that you needed to have in your packet and was sent to many of us as we were asking the follow-up questions about what are the, the reasons for granting a vested rights extension to an owner? We were sent through Mr. Batchelders, I think directly from him, that came through the planning staff, the citations that name Section 54-809, Item 4-F, Item 4F. And 54-809 deals with, I lost my place, but it deals with concept plan procedures. So, so the applicant rightfully went through their goal to create a subdivision to be able to develop property on this site back in 2018, 20, I think they began in 2017. They, they worked with the TRC for a concept plan approval, which they obtained right before you, you heard their case for a subdivision request in April of 2018. And that's the way the land use for this particular property under the TMS numbers that were given to you and under the name of Oakville Plantation Road has literally sucked for two years. And so what the, the follow-up of granting a concept plan approval is that there is an effective period that is named under this Section 4F. The effective period of a concept plan is conditioned on whether there have been ongoing activities leading to construction during that first two-year period of vested rights. And if there's a lapse in the construction activities for six months or more, then the original vested rights ends at the end of two years. So that is the information that's in our city code. That is the information that you were not provided in advance in your packet. To the best of my understanding, I hope that is information that you were given tonight by your legal consultation. But that is the decision in front of you. It can't be the whole, you know, the whole value of looking at flooding. That is going to be on the council. We are not asking to change the land use opportunities for this owner at this point in time. But we are asking that they have not served the, the, the letter or the stated purpose of a concept plan approval by continuing on for construction. And basically, you can see that in the document that was given to you at the bottom of the page, that, that, page 41, that is part of this packet. It says, "Concept plan approval then goes into the approval of a preliminary plat and the approval of road construction plans. That is the normal course when a developer is intentional to construct what he was given concert, concept approval to do." And this applicant has not made a first attempt at getting an approval of their preliminary plat or road construction plans. So I think it's very clear, according to Code 54-809-4F, that they have not met the terms that they were working under the last two years. And on that basis, you need to deny their extension request. They're free to come back with a new concept plan. I heard your conversation with the gentleman on Coming Street. There's no reason that they can't come back, but you should not extend, give them this extension because they have not lived up to the condition that is placed on granting such an extension. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your work. I know you have a long agenda. I'm signing off.
Thank you, Councilmember, Council, thank you, Councilmember Jackson, for your comments and thoughts. Chloe, who do we have next?
We have three more. Okay, Jason, you should be able to use your microphone now. Jason Crowley.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. My name is Jason Crowley. I'm the Director of Communities and Transportation for the Coastal Conservation League. The league urges this commission to deny this applicant an extension of their concept plan approval. As you've heard from several of the folks who have spoken already, since receiving their concept plan approval in April of 2018, the applicant has failed to submit the necessary materials to proceed to TRC and begin construction in a timely manner. As heard first, they were legally challenged by the adjacent neighborhood, who fought to prevent the applicant from utilizing Burden Creek Road and the lot within their neighborhood to access the development. And then they spent much of the last year acquiring additional property on River Road to avoid Burden Creek Road. And that additional property would require annexation into the city's jurisdiction. The applicant brought those annexation requests to City Council last fall and then attempted to rezone the entire area PUD in order to create an entirely new development project on the site known as River Run. They deferred that request to City Council days before the Dutch dialogues process was set to commence, stating that they would come back with a revised project that was in keeping with the Dutch dialogues recommendations. They never returned and council ultimately withdrew the annexation and rezoning requests from their agendas. Since that time, City Council unanimously adopted the Dutch dialogues report, as mentioned, which recommends severely limiting development on elevations below 10 feet. Nearly all of this property is 10 feet and below. City Council also adopted the new stormwater manual, which will go into effect net, next month, and utilizes stringent new requirements to ensure that new developments can appropriately manage its stormwater on the site. This concept plan does not align with the new stormwater manual requirements. All throughout this two-year period, the concept plan has not moved forward. This new proposals were worked on, legal battles were fought, but this plan sat dormant. Therefore, there is no reason why the concept plan should be extended. Local, national, and international experts have concluded that this is essentially the worst location on Johns Island to construct a dense new development. It is at the mouth of a creek that frequently floods and is susceptible to storm surge and sea level rise. But what you are all here to consider is whether or not they have demonstrated that this concept plan remains vested, and the answer is clearly no. They have failed over the past two years to submit their necessary materials to TRC that would enable them to begin construction on this site in a timely manner. And therefore, we again urge you all to deny this extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Chloe, who do we have next, please?
Okay, next is Mr. John Logar. There you are. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for listening. My name is John Logar, and I represent the Johns Island Passports. We've submitted a letter, which I hope you've had time to read. And I'd like to make note that we've submitted that letter jointly with the Johns Island Community Association and also the Johns Island Council. So there's a, a lot of the community that's behind what we've, where you've said. Now, pretty much along with everybody else that has talked about it, you know, that the development is absolutely in the wrong place. It's at the mouth of the Burden Creek Drainage Basin. It's really low land, and also it's very close to the proximity of Johns Island Airport. As a matter of fact, it's adjacent to it. And as you know, there was a recent fatal crash there, which could very well have been in that subdivision if it had been built. But, but going back to two other things, no construction progress. You know, it's been two years and there's been zero construction progress. And the other thing that's been brought up is the, the traffic access, the plan for traffic access. You know, one of the things is that, you know, everyone's referring to Section 54-9 something or other in the ordinances. If you look at Section 54-965, there's a revocation in there and how this can be, this approval can be revoked if there's been any type of determination that there was a material misrepresentation. I mean, at this point in time, it appears there's never been a plan for traffic access. There's not, you know, adequate traffic access that can actually have 400 homes go through. Can't go through the development. The access to River Road, as Jason just said, isn't practical at this point in time. So there may, there's other legal reasons. I think you can also revoke it based upon the fact that there never was adequate traffic access. So with all those in mind, with what everybody else has said, we urge you to oppose this extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Logar. Chloe, who is the last? I think they said there's one more.
Yes, the last person who signed up to speak is Ms. Anna Catherine Carroll. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Ms. Carroll, we're ready for you.
Thank you, Anna Catherine Carroll with the Preservation Society of Charleston. The Preservation Society agrees with the statements made previously that per Section 54-809-4F in the City of Charleston zoning ordinance that reads, "The approval of a concept plan results in a vested right from the date of planning commission approval that lasts for two years plus ongoing construction that proceeds in a timely manner, of which a six-month or more construction, lapse in construction would result in the end of this vested right term." We feel that because this applicant has not in good faith initiated construction since the initial approval in April 2018, the applicant has clearly not met the intent of the ordinance to proceed with construction in a timely manner. And so we would urge the planning commission to deny this request as it does not meet the intent of the ordinance's requirements for the effective period of concept plan approvals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Carroll. I think we have several, do we need Christopher or Chloe, do we need to read some into the record?
Yes, there is some, there is some overlap with folks who have already spoken. So I think Christopher could, can mention those, paraphrase them. But there are about approximately 12 written comments that were submitted, Christopher, if you could read those.
Okay, if you can paraphrase those, Chris, we greatly appreciate it.
Yes, I'm going to go through this quick, as quickly as I can. Okay, the first one is from Roger Kirby, 3460 Boeckett Road. Please do not allow project as requested. The second is from Richard Fleming at 2787 Little Creek Road. There's absolutely no basis for extension of the subdivision approvals required. This massive project of 400-plus homes on low-lying areas will require extensive fill and subsequent further flooding. And it goes completely against all recent research and decisions, Dutch dialogues. We must be willing to protect our wetlands and prohibit reckless development on Johns Island and the Charleston community. Ron Thompson at 39 Isle of Hope Road. Please oppose this proposed development of over 400 units. This land is too low and is wrong to saddle our community with more housing properly dependent against rising water, excessive rainfall, and storm surge. Colin Bentley at 3450 Old Pond Road. The City of Charleston, Charleston's plan for Johns Island is another shadow moss flooded by back carry on with this plant. William Brenzer at 25 Meeting Street. I'm completely opposed to a dense subdivision in the sensitive area of Johns Island. This is an area of low elevation with significant well and there's very prone to flooding. Building 424 units in such an environment is completely at odds with the recommendations of the Dutch dialogues and when undoubtedly have and would undoubtedly have severe adverse consequences. Please deny it. Eleanor Payne at ten fifty Lender Drive. Johns Island cannot withstand irresponsible building. It is a unique island that cannot be built up in the same way as West Ashley. City Council has already agreed that development on land ten feet below sea level should be very limited. Please make sure builders respect the guidelines we've spent so much effort to implement. There's no reason for this extension. Using Milliken, I would respectfully ask PC to deny the one-year subdivision concept plan approval extension of this large two hundred and five-lot subdivision on Johns Island. This concept plan is nowhere near to being adequate to begin construction or the granting of permits. It is of the utmost importance that this concept plan come under new and revised building regulations and stormwater requirements. Sea level rise and climate change is particular in, is particularly impacting low-line large rural parcels, such as these on the sea islands, and in particular on Johns Island. Geographically, this land is a location where the, this kind of dense, single-family subdivision is of grave concern. Further Dutch Dialogues recommendations, concept plans such as these must be reworked and reimagined. Please step out in a bold and courageous way to protect our sea islands and current residents on our sea islands. We're urging builders and developers to rework these large-scale subdivision plans, which are truly not recommended in these types of locations. Thank you. Okay, we have. I'm sorry?
Want me to read this letter from Mr. Pena?
I'll go, I'll kind of go through that and just keep going with it.
You go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so to the Planning Commission, Mr. Carish. This is from the Charleston County Aviation Authority. This letter is being submitted in reference to the one-year extension of subdivision concept plan approval for Oakville Plantation Road, American Star Johns Island, listed on the Planning Commission Agenda for June seventeenth. The property for proposed subdivision is located immediately adjacent to property owned by Charleston County Aviation Authority, where the authority operates and maintains the Charleston Executive Airport, JZI. On March twenty-first, twenty twenty, Charleston County Aviation Authority was made aware of an unfortunate situation involving a Cessna three one zero one that was substantially damaged when the aircraft was involved in a crash where the pilot was fatally injured. As a result of the crash, Charleston County Aviation Authority, working in conjunction with Charleston County Rescue and Emergency Responders from the area, were required to Oakville Plantation Road, American Star property, in order to gain access to the site of aircraft crash for rescue purposes. Since that unfortunate incident occurred, CCAA is now concerned with the potential that it may need access to the Oakville Plantation property in the future. And as such, CCAA is evaluating potential footprint expansion of the land at the Johns Island Airport. We felt it was important that the Planning Commission be made aware of such planning efforts by CCAA. Thank you very much for your consideration. For my opinion, Deputy Executive Director and COO, Charleston County Aviation Authority. Then we have a letter, a very detailed letter from Mr. Dustin, who's already spoken. Are we going to read through all of this?
Well, is it, there's a, Mr. Morgan, does the letter encompass what he's already said for the record? Is it basically already has been said for the record?
There's more detail in the letter than probably in what he was speaking on. It's a background on elevation flooding, background on traffic, airport proximity, ecology, and natural storm.
You want to, you want to, can you surmise that? Is there any way to do that? I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but we have already heard from him. You tell.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be tough to do that. It's probably best I just read it, unfortunately.
Okay, all right, go ahead then. Yes, sir.
For time purposes, not because of anything else.
Christopher, I think the reading, the reading the comments is mainly to make sure people's get a chance to speak and be heard. So I think that that is in the record, that that letter will be entered into the public record.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, he has been heard from us, and we know his position.
In the letter, that wasn't necessarily in what he was speaking of verbally. But but, you know, it's, it's commission's discretion. You'll tell me what you wanted to. We also have a letter from Johns Island Task Force, which is aligned with Johns Island Community Association, Johns Island Council. So three organizations together. To the Planning Commission, respectfully submit for consideration our opposition to the proposed one-year extension subdivision concept plan, Oakville Plantation Road. The location of the subdivision epitomizes where development on Johns Island should not occur. Our position, this request is based upon five factors. Lack of construction progress, lack of adequate access, recurring Burden Creek drainage basin flooding issues, low elevation of land, and safety issues related to Charleston Executive Airport. So then they go into detail on lack of construction process. Two years since concept plan was approved, there's been no construction progress at site. Lack of access, subdivision's never had a viable plan for adequate access to River Road, support large number of dwelling units. Burden Creek drainage basin flooding, Burden Creek drains a significant portion of Johns Island. I think we've had a good bit of discussion on that. Then we have low elevation of land. I think there's been a good discussion of that. Less than one percent of subdivision is above ten feet in elevation. Dutch Dialogues guiding recommendations for Johns Island are, I think we've had a good bit of discussion on that. Adjacency to Johns Island Executive Airport. In light of the recent fatal air crash, the area around the airport must have expanded safety zones, which limit development. Planning Commission's disapproval of the extension of the concept plan would be a decisive action on behalf of the City of Charleston to mitigate flooding, decrease flood-related hazards, thus reducing the risk of damage to the property of existing residents and increasing the safety of the island. So we've got that. Then we have one, one more printed, I believe, maybe a couple more. This is from James Bishop. It says, "Dear Christopher, we write to express my opinion about development on Johns Island. Building even near flood-prone areas should be forbidden. With global warming, it's just a matter of time before flood-prone areas become regularly flooded and adjacent areas become flood-prone. Hurricanes are predicted to become stronger and more frequent. Peasmeal development of Johns Island is destroying rural aspects that made the island an attractive place to live. I recommend a moratorium on all future construction until a comprehensive master plan is developed for housing, schools, sewage, water, electricity, medical facility, parks, recreation, traffic flow, et cetera. Oakville is only a small piece of planning needs." Thank you. Then we have from Glenda Miller. Yes, "I'm writing to urge the commission to oppose a request from the developers of the proposed Oakville River Run subdivision because the property is located in a flood-prone area on Johns Island. I would also like to know why the city invested a significant amount of time and taxpayer dollars in Dutch Dialogues if it has no intention of following its recommendations, particularly those related to elevation-based zoning on Johns Island. It's time to stop building floodplains and wetlands. Up the fill and build practices on our barrier islands. It's time for the commission and City Council to represent their residents and recognize the science that this is warning us of the dangers of sacrificing the land to make the developers wealthy." Thank you. Then we have, I think that's it.
That's it, yes.
Okay, so those are all the, we've covered all the, all the comments received, people who've spoken. I want to, I don't want to exclude anyone. I'm not trying to stifle anyone. I just for the sake of time, just want to make sure.
Yes, everyone who's, yes, everyone who signed up to speak or submitted comments prior to the noon deadline today has been heard. And Miss Jacobs has her hand raised.
Well, again, we, normally we'd hear from the, from the applicant back. Miss Jacobs has some a question about one of the comments? Because otherwise, we need to hear back from the applicant, Mr. Richardson.
No, I'm just waiting in line after the process.
Okay, so let's go to Mr. Richardson. The process would be that we hear back from the applicant to, to answer concerns or speak any, onto any one of the concerns that he's heard. Mr. Richardson, you've been very patient. And would you, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner. Just to briefly touch on a couple items. Traffic study was submitted and to traffic and transportation and confirmed prior to the approval of this concept plan in April 2018. Most recently, the airport crash was in fact on airport property, and the Aviation Authority could not access their own property. They were, of course, granted access by Dr. Lackey, and he even drove them to the crash site on their own property for all the emergency responders to access. Any future development on this parcel would be public rights away. And of course, they and anyone in an emergent need to access an adjacent property would have that ability. It's concerning, though, that the point needs to be made. There is a large buffer separating this property and the Aviation Authority property. This is outside of the crash zone, for those who are familiar with pilot and airport terms. And so that just needs to be clarified. The airport could not reach their own property. And Dr. Lackey took the emergency responders to the crash site on their property. The rest really just refers to the process of a concept plan and gaining preliminary plat and road plan approvals through TRC. When a concept plan is devised, it is, it has a pre-review with usually two to three reviews at TRC before it is given the technical approval to move forward for Planning Commission approval. That was done in April of 2018. The process is not over at that point. Then there is a lengthy process to go back to TRC for preliminary plat and road plans. At that time, whatever is currently approved and whatever is currently standard in zoning law and development law must be followed. Any plans on this property going forward must follow current laws. For the rest of this explanation, I will defer to Mr. Brandon Gaskins, who is the attorney. He is also a recognized presenter on this. Chloe, if you could please switch over to him, I would appreciate it.
Yes, he should be able to unmute himself and share video if he'd like.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As Mr. Richardson said, my name is Brandon Gaskins. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Moore and Ben Allen here in Charleston, and I represent the applicant, American Star Development, SC. Most of the issues that have been raised today by the opponents are the same issues that they raised in previous litigation in which they appealed this commission's approval of the concept plan. In that appeal, the Circuit Court addressed those issues and either rejected them or stated that these were issues that would be resolved through the normal planning process that Mr. Richardson just described. So to the extent that there are concerns about the Dutch Dialogues and what stormwater requirements are going to be required, those issues will be addressed during that process. So the question presented to you today is not whether your approval in March of 2018 was appropriate. The question is, is should the concept approve, concept plan be extended? And on that point, as a legal matter, the approval of this extension is required under the South Carolina Vested Rights Act and the applicable ordinances of the City of Charleston. The Vested Rights Act provides that an extension of a vested right in a site-specific development plan, which is what we have here, must, and I emphasize must, be approved unless an amendment to the land development ordinances or regulations has been adopted that prohibits approval. This specific language comes directly from the Act codified in Section six dash twenty-nine dash fifteen forty of the South Carolina Code of laws. The statute does not allow, for any other reason, to deny an extension. In this case, the Planning Commission approved the concept plan on April eighteenth, 2018, which created a two-year vested right. Before this vested right expired, American Star timely filed for an extension in March of 2020. In the intervening two years, there has not been any amendment to the city's land development ordinances that would prohibit approval of the concept plan. Therefore, approval of this extension is required. Today, there have been some additional arguments raised about the applicant's delay in proceeding for a preliminary plat or preliminary development man, plan approval or beginning construction. And those arguments have no merit. The ordinance that was cited, fifty-four dash eight zero nine subsection four F, does not require the applicant to submit a application for a preliminary development plan within two years or begin construction. That is the exact purpose of allowing an, for, for extensions. What the ordinance does provide is that the approval of a concept plan or PUD site plan results in a vested right from the date of planning commission approval that lasts for two years plus, plus ongoing construction that proceeds in a timely manner. The clear implication of these words is that the vested right does not expire in two years if construction has commenced. And then it goes on to say, a lapse of six months or more in construction after two years from the date of approval in this vested right term. But there is nothing in that ordinance that requires the applicant to, to submit a plan or commence construction within those two years, as long as they request an extension, which is what we're doing here today. So we request that you reject that argument. And also, we believe their argument and interpretation of that statute directly conflicts with the Vested Rights Act, which provides that local ordinances must provide that extensions must be granted unless there has been an amendment that prohibits approval. Here, again, there's been no amendment. And even if the section did apply, there has not been a lapse of six months. A lapse necessarily assumes that construction has commenced before laps can, can occur. But because construction has not began, that section that the opponents rely on has no application to this case. But even if it did, I think it's important to note that we are within that six-month timeframe. Again, the language says a lapse of six months or more in construction after, after two years from the date of approval will end this vested right term. Again, the concept plan was approved in April of 2018. It would expire unless extended in April of 2020. And so then you have six more months. And so clearly, we're, we're within those six months. And finally, I, I think this argument about delay is disingenuous and unfair. Any delay is primarily the result of the Homeowners Association's appeal of the Planning Commission's approval. Following approval of the concept plan, the HOA, the Homeowners Association, appealed to the Circuit Court, and that appeal was rejected several months later in December of 2018. At that point in time, they filed a motion for reconsideration. And that motion for reconsideration was not decided until April of 2019. So they tied up this project for an entire year. And as a result of that appeal, it stayed the Planning Commission's approval under Rule two forty-one A of the South Carolina appellate court rule. And the final approval did not become effective until that appeal resolved last April. So by extension, the vested right period would not have begun to run until the Planning Commission's approval became final. It is fundamentally unfair for the opponents to, to delay the project for a year with an unsuccessful appeal and then come to this planning commission and rely on that, on the delay that they created as a basis for denying this extension. For these reasons, we request that the Planning Commission grant the request of extension, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins. Mr. Richardson, any further, any last comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That's going to close the public, public aspect of this item on the agenda. We'll now hear from commission members, questions, motions, comments. Chloe, you got anybody?
Charlie, this is Erica Harrison. Can we go back into executive session? Or I like to.
Would you like to make a, if you, if you want to make a motion to that? Okay, Miss Harrison's making the motion that we go back into executive session. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
This Jacob seconds the motion. I'm going to call the roll, just so we do it very quickly. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Miss Harrison, obviously, that's I, because you made the motion. Dr. Irons?
Aye.
Miss Jacobs, obviously, you second in the motion. Miss Johnson?
I'm on board, aye.
Okay, Ms. Lampises? Ms. Lampises?
Aye.
Mr. Lassane?
I believe he had to take a work call.
Okay, Mr. Flue?
Aye.
Okay, so we, we have it eight, and I'm going to vote in favor of the executive session. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to table, go into executive session, and we will reconvene hopefully shortly. Is everybody back? Chris, we got anybody?
Looks like it.
Is there a motion that we come out of executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Jacobs, there's a second?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Bailey?
Aye, approve.
Ms. Harrison?
Approve.
Dr. Irons?
Approve.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yea, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Lampisus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Favor.
Great. Mr. Lassane, I don't know if he's back with us, but regardless, I know we got a majority. I just wanted for the record to say that no decisions were made in executive session. No motions were made. We just got input from our attorney. Now that we're out of executive session, we've finished the public input on this item. Is any discussion, motions, or questions from, from commission members?
I have a quick question for planning staff. I want to focus in on where, I know we've talked about vested rights, but one that I'm most concerned about is section 54-809F, which is the effective period for a concept plan because this is what was approved back in 2018, was it, was the concept plan.
Um, if not, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, uh, the one-year extension of this subdivision request. Again, I make the motion with a heavy heart. I have concerns about it. I hear everyone there. You know, uh, we're not potted plants. We do make decisions. But unfortunately, we have to see that there was some, there would have been some change, as Ms. Harrison asked. And there hasn't been a change that would allow us to deny this request. And I don't know that that's there, so I'm gonna make a motion to request a one-year extension of the subdivision, uh, and concept plan approval.
I'll second that motion. This is Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Lampisus has her hand raised.
Great. Ms. Lampisus?
I was to second the motion. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll, any other comments? If not, we'll call for the vote, and I'll read the roll. Mr. Bailey?
Ms. Harrison has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Harrison, go ahead.
You're muted. You're muted. Ms. Harrison, you're muted.
All right. Just with that being said, because, you know, we looked, if I'm looking at this correctly, and I understand where we might be going, is that even though we are having to vest this concept plan, reapprove this concept plan, it is mainly because there has not actually been a change in the ordinance, and nor was the Dutch dialogue adopted as an ordinance in order for us to not be able to, uh, do what is mandated by our current ordinance. And so, you know, I think that's, that's a tough call, and we can't really make any, you know, we can't go out on a limb and, and, uh, and make a decision that's not based in, on the ordinance that's in front of us. And without any changes, we, I don't think we can, um, um, not approve this vesting.
I'm with you, Ms. Harrison. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Bailey has his hand raised, and Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
I have one additional question for Christopher, and that has to do with, what stormwater require, what, what, what stormwater requirements will apply, um, if this moves forward?
It will be under the new codes because of where they are in their review process. And Mr. Richardson made reference to them having to meet the new codes for storm.
And it'll have to go, Christopher, to correct me, it'll have to go through, through where does it go from here? The TR, TRC, tell me where it's going.
Well, they would have to have TRC approval to begin construction on the property, in other words.
And that deals directly with the stormwater issues, correctly?
Right. They will have to go through the entire stormwater permitting process.
Great. Mr. Bailey, any, any other questions?
Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Great. If not, Ms. Jacobs?
Before we vote, and I'm sure I know how we're all gonna vote, I just wanted to tell the attendees that we are listening to you. But the concept plan will, it's only a concept plan. It does have to go through extensive TRC review. And as they mentioned, they will be going through the new Dutch stormwater guidelines that have come out of the Dutch dialogues. Those are guidelines that are managed by the TRC. And this, this development plan will most likely change because of that. I just wanted to state that for the record before we voted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Anyone other comments, questions? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I vote no.
Okay. All right, against the motion. Ms. Harrison?
Uh, yay.
Okay. In favor of the motion, Dr. Irons?
I in favor.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs?
No.
No. Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Okay. Ms. Lampisus?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Mr. Flue?
I in favor.
Uh, I don't know, Mr. Lusain, are you with us? If not, I'm assuming he's not. I'm gonna vote aye in favor for the reasons I stated when I made the motion. That being said, uh, I guess it's, uh, six to two, is that correct? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you all for your patience, and thank you to everyone that spoke tonight. We listen to you, we hear you, and we're gonna move on to the next subdivision request, which is number two. Broad and Barry Street, St. Mary's Field, Residential Park, Peninsula TMS, number four, five, seven oh seven, oh one, oh three oh, two point two five acres, twenty-one lots, request subdivision concept plan approvals on limited business. Mr. Morgan, who's doing this?
Ms. Harp?
Ms. Harp, I'm sorry. Anna Harp.
Oh, again, we'll get it. We'll get it. It's okay. It's okay. Um, this is, like you said, St. Mary's Residential and, uh, and Park Concept Plan. The applicant is requesting subdivision concept plan, as you said, two point two five acres. And they're going to subdivide it into nineteen parcels. That's his twenty-one, this nineteen. This is property located in the corner of Barry and Broad Streets, across from Sergeant Jasper. There's nineteen parcels with a park that will be overlooking, um, the harbor across Lockwood Drive. The property has received variances from the border zoning appeal zoning for setbacks and whatever they needed. There are certain grant trees on the property, and everything will have to be approved by border zoning appeals if removal is requested. We had the City of Charleston's Technical Review Committee has reviewed the subdivision concept plan for compliance with city standards. It's Zone GB, General Business, which allows for single-family attached residential units. The surrounding uses existing and proposed include a single and multifamily residential, commercial uses, and institutional uses. Because we have three concept plans coming up, and we'll say this now. The concept plan is, maybe I should have said it for the previous item, but the concept plan only allows for the concept. It's a concept approval. After the concept plan is approved, it will go, come back to TRC for preliminary plot and reconstruction plans. That is when we get down on the needy gritty and look at lot sizes and how the roads are going to be constructed and, you know, the fire access and all that, that will be looked at in more fine detail during the plot review, side plan, or reconstruction plan, which comes back after, comes after the concept plan approval by the planning commission. We, um, the staff after review recommends approval. There is, Christopher, if you could please go, who's doing the slides? If you could please go to the very last slide, there's, we recommend approval. There, as you can see, there's a property, and Sergeant Jasper is directly across the street. And we recommend approval with the condition from stormwater. And it's a very long condition, so I will just leave it up there for you to read. It has to do with the new stormwater design manual standards are going to affect, stormwater design standard manual that goes into effect on July first. And if, in order for the property to be grandfathered with the previous requi- requirements, it will have to submit a complete construction activity application prior to July first of two thousand and twenty. So with that condition, the staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Harp. You had mentioned that, you said general business, but the brochure says limited business, and what we're hearing is that.
Let's see. I have general business on one thing, and I will go apologize if I have the wrong information. Just go ahead, and I will verify for you.
Okay, so, uh, again, it is a difference, but so it's, so zone, what is a zone, do you know?
Looks like it's limited business.
Limited business. I thought that's what said. Okay, you just said general, to me, of curve, that's all.
Sorry.
Is the, uh, is the applicant with us?
So I've just promoted Trey Linton to panelist. And Trey, if you can let me know if I need to promote anybody else as well from the list, I'm happy to.
Yes. Good evening. Hi, my name's Trey Linton. I am a civil engineer with Forsberg Engineering, and our request is for subdivision concept plan approval of St. Mary's Field. Um, we've submitted this project to the technical review committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're okay with the conditions, Mr. Linton, that's set forth?
Yes, we are okay with the conditions. Um, there's also, um, a few other members of the, um, team representing, uh, the Beach Company on as well, I think Dan Doyle.
Well, again, we don't, we don't, we'll, we'll hear from whoever you want us to hear from. We're not, again, it's a late hour, but we're not trying to cut anybody off. If you have somebody we want us to hear from, we'll hear from them.
Okay.
Yeah, Trey, if there's somebody else that wants to speak, just let me know. I'll bump them over to panelists.
Okay. So is anyone else, uh, the applicant has spoken, I guess we've heard from Mr. Linton. Do we have any comments, or anyone that wants to speak in favor of this application?
There is no one signed up to speak, and there were no comments submitted.
In favor or against the application, either way?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that makes it easy, Mr. Linton. But I guess there's no comments you wanna make now, because no one, there's no comments, so that's okay. With that being said, we're gonna close the public aspect of this. And, uh, motions, questions, comments from commission members?
I move to approve.
Ms. Harris? That Ms. Harrison with conditions?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. Ms. Harrison motion, makes a motion to approve of conditions?
Ms. Lampisus has her hand raised.
Ms. Lampisus? Great. Thank you, Ms. Lampisus. Any other comments, questions? If not, uh, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Johnson has her hand raised.
I'm sorry. Ms. Johnson, you go ahead.
My hand is raised because I'd like to speak right after this vote, please.
You wanna after the vote?
Correct. It's procedural.
Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna go ahead, um, and take a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Irons?
I in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lampisus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
I in favor.
And again, I'll call Mr. Lusain's name out just in case he joined us. But I'm in favor as well, so I guess that's, um, eight, eight to nine, eight to zero, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Johnson, you want the floor?
I do. I was gonna ask if there are any items on the agenda that can be referred to our next meeting. Um, we have some ordinance amendments and some different things, but it is coming up on after nine o'clock. Um, so just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah. I like, I like that comment, too.
I, it, from a city staff standpoint, I think all the ordinance amendments could wait. If, if you all want them to wait, uh, we would like to get the subdivisions done for timeline factors and the zonings. And I don't think we have any remaining controversial zonings.
No, they will do the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The ordinance amendment number four, I was wondering if Lee is on here. That, that one's pretty straightforward, just updating.
Controversial one. That is a pretty cut and dried, simple amendment.
Okay. Let's go back. I wanna go back to the agenda if we can. So we, we passed number two. Can we go to number three on subdivisions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number three is Point Hope Parkway, First Light, PH four, Kane Hoi South, TMS number two, six, two, zero, zero, I'm gonna miss a zero, 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 eight, approximately twenty-two point nine acres, twenty-six lots, request subdivision concept plan approvals on PUD, pud, Kane Hoi. Ms. Harp, I think I got it right.
He remembered. Okay, this one is, uh, First Light, Phase Four, um, Kane Hoi. It's, uh, located in the intersection of Point Hope Parkway and Seven Sticks Drive on Kane Hoi. It's a concept plan approval for twenty-two point nine acres for twenty-six parcels of, for single-family detached homes, as well as open space, which will include a neighborhood park. Trees in the, on the property are being evaluated on an ongoing basis based, um, on the pud document. The, uh, the pud is the Kane Hoi South Timber, which allows for single-family detached and attached residential units. Surrounding uses include a single and multifamily residential, commercial uses, and, um, it is close to, um, Philip Simmons Middle and High School. And, um, it went through TRC. Everything has been approved by TRC, was reviewed for compliance, and staff recommends approval with the same stormwater condition.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Harp. Is the applicant here? Do we have the applicant here to speak?
Yes, uh, Mr. Will Cox. I've promoted you to panelist. I can promote your other team members as well if you like.
Mr. Will Cox, go ahead.
Yeah, here I am.
Okay. I needed him.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Sorry about that. Uh, yeah, so Will Cox, I work with Thompson Hutton. We are the civil engineer for this project. Wanted to just go ahead and thank everybody for your time and consideration. We agree with staff's recommendation, and we don't have any, um, additional comments or anything out of this time that are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, is anyone, do we have any comments on this? Any, uh, positive, negative comments, Chloe?
No, nobody has signed up to speak in favor or in opposition, and there have been no comments submitted on, for this application.
Great. Thank you. That being said, we're gonna close the public aspect of this out. Uh, comments, questions, commission members, or motion?
We have a hand raised from Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I move for approval of the staff recommendation.
With the condition?
Yes, exactly as outlined by staff.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Ms. Jacob seconds the motion. Um, any other comments? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and call the roll. Uh, Mr. Bailey, I'm assuming you're a, since you made the motion.
Yes, I approve.
All right, Ms. Harrison?
Yes, approve.
Uh, Dr. Irons?
I in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Lampisus?
Aye, in favor.
Uh, Mr. Flue?
I in favor.
And I don't know that Harry's here. If he is, he'll speak up. Otherwise, I am in favor as well, so that would be eight to zero on that one. The next item is, uh, subdivisions for Gadsden Street, Halston Village, Peninsula, TMS number four, five, seven, oh three, oh three, oh oh one, approximately point three, four, two acres, six lots, craft subdivision concept plan approval, zone single and two-family residential, STR. Uh, Ms. Harp?
This one is the last one, and it is on the corner of Gadsden and Buffane. You probably all know this house. There used to be a home in there, so this is a redevelopment. And the request is for six parcels of detached and attached, um, existing detached homes and the addition of, um, new attached homes. The parcel has been approved by border zoning appeal zoning for the configuration presented on the plan. Again, TRC has reviewed the conceptual subdivision for compliance with city standards. It is own STR, single and two-family residential, allows for single and two-family. And the two-family would be the attached homes. The concept, the, uh, the same condition would apply for the staff recommendation for approval. Same stormwater condition. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Harp. Is, do we have the applicant here?
Yes, uh, Mr. Andrew Todd Burke, you've been promoted to panelist. You should be able to unmute and share your video.
Yes, sir.
Good evening again. Okay, um, I just wanted to thank Anna for the presentation, and the only thing I'd like to add is, um, that, uh, we are using, uh, some green infrastructure and LID tactics for the stormwater on this site by incorporating rain barrels, um, rain gardens, and pervious pavers into the site. And we are not generating any new runoff from the site, and we have not connected to the city's storm drain system. Um, and also to add that, uh, the client has been working for, uh, two years plus minus, working with the neighbors to generate support and acceptance. And, uh, we had the BZA approval unanimously, um, and we have a preliminary bar approval as well. And we had the BZA approval unanimously, and we have a preliminary bar approval as well. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone, Chloe, that we have wants to speak in favor or in opposition to the?
Yes, we have one person, Hank Hofford. I will enable your microphone. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Mr. Hofford, how are you, sir? I hope you're doing well.
Yeah, very good, thank you. And I'll leave my comments to just restate what the engineer just said, and thank you guys for all your time and effort and sticking with it and getting things going again, so I'll let it go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Hofford, it looks good on Buffane Street as well. Any other, do we have any, any other comments, Chloe?
That's it.
Okay, no other comments? I'm assuming that we'll go ahead and close the public aspect out of this. Any questions, comments, motions of commission members?
Mr. Bailey has his hand raised.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bailey?
I move, I move to approve recommended by staff.
Great, thank you, sir. Is any, a second to the motion or any other questions, comments? If not, I'll second, I'll be glad to second the motion, Mr. Bailey. I think it's a good project, it's a good intel project. I jog by there, ride my bike there all the time, so I think it's a neat project. And some other questions or comments? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey, I'm assuming you're good on this?
Yes, I favor or approve or whatever we say.
Yep, Ms. Harrison?
In favor of the motion.
Dr. Irons?
I am in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Lepasus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
In favor.
And I don't know if Mr. LaSane's here, but I'm in favor as well, so that would be eight to nothing. So are we going to go, are we going to skip all the ordinance amendments and just go to zonings? Or tell me?
But the one zone, the, the one ordinance amendment that has a timeliness factor is the one that relates to the allowed heights for property in special flood hazard area, and that is.
We need to hear that. Okay, so that's item number four, Mr. Morgan?
I'm sorry?
Is that item number four?
It is, it is, and we don't, Chloe, confirming, we don't have anybody wanting to speak on that.
I'm going to read this under the record. We're now in ordinance amendments to amend provision of Chapter 54 of the Code of the City of Charleston zoning ordinance to amend section 54-505c pertaining to the exception for maximum allowed height for properties located in special floods hazard area within the conservation RR1, SR1, SR2, SR6, SR7, and STR zoning districts. Mr. Bachelder, is that who's going to talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you. I'll be very brief. So for, for homes that are constructed in flood zones, the first floor is required to be elevated to meet the flood zone elevation. A few years ago, the city adopted a one-foot freeboard requirement, which says, which, which means that the first floor has to be elevated an additional foot above the, the flood zone elevation. Recently, and, and when we did that, we, we amended our height regulations to allow an additional foot of height for those situations. So recently, city council increased the freeboard requirement to two feet, meaning the first floor has to be two feet above the flood zone elevation. And so this ordinance just simply amends our height restrictions for certain residential zoning districts to allow that additional foot of height for homes that are subject to those requirements. And the, the reason this is necessary tonight is that the new two-foot freeboard requirement takes effect on July 1st. And we don't want to create a problem for homes that are subject to that new rule, so that's the reason for the rush. Thank you.
Mr. Bach, is any, and it's my understanding from Chloe that no one has signed up to speak or there's no comments on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that being said, we'll close the public aspect. Questions, motions of commission members?
Ms. Harrison has her hand raised. Ms. Harrison?
Who is that?
Ms. Harrison.
Hey, Ms. Harrison, you go ahead.
So one quick, do, we need to go ahead and like make a motion to defer one, two, one through three, and then move to approve number four?
That would be helpful.
Well, we're on number four, so I read number four, and so why don't we get a motion on four, and let, Mr. Morgan, should we get a?
I was going to do one motion.
That's, that's fine, why don't you do that?
So I move to defer ordinance amendments one, two, and three, and move to approve number four.
That makes good sense. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, I appreciate you doing that. Is there a second to the motion or comments?
A second.
Ms. Jacobs seconds. Further comments of commission members? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bailey?
I am in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Irons?
I am in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye, in favor.
Ms. Lepasus?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Flue?
I am in favor.
And I am in favor as well, so that's eight, zero there, that we defer those items and approve that one item, number four. Chris, can we take any of the zonings together?
Unfortunately, the way they are grouped, they can't really, but we're going to.
Okay.
We'll fly through these.
Okay, all right, let me go ahead and read them into the record. Zoning number one is 340.
Mr. Chairman, hold on one second. Chloe, do we have anybody who wants to speak on any of the zonings?
Yes, question.
Which item, which item?
So for 334 Folly Road, we have the applicant here, and we have one written comment that needs to be written, read, read into the record. Other person is Councilmember Jackson, but she's no longer here in the meeting.
All right, let's do this. I'm going to go ahead and take them in order because we're going to go through them fast. Number one is 340, 342 Woodland Shores Road, Woodland Shores, James Island, TMS 343, 1100111, comma 112, approximately point oh seven acres, request single-family SR1, single-family residential in R4 in Charleston County.
That is correct. So it would match the zoning of the surrounding neighborhood. Here it is midway down Woodland Shores, and it would be in line with the way we've annexed other parcels in that area.
Okay, any questions of any commission members? If not, it says a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you know, instead of calling roll on, on all of these, unless somebody, is anybody against to this one? If anybody gets to notify me, otherwise I'm assuming it's eight to nothing. All in favor of this, I'm assuming that, is that okay, Chris, for the record?
That's fine.
Okay, so it's eight, nothing that approves. Number two is 513 Arlington Drive, Sky, Sky Lope, Sky Cope, West Ashley, TMS 3100700090, going from diverse residential DR1F to zone, zone mixed style residential M12 in Charleston County.
And so it was M12 in Charleston County, which I believe is about 12 units an acre or so. However, in the city, it would come in as DR1F, but that matches the zoning of the property to the south and to the north and across the street. So we were comfortable with that. It is a little bit of an increase in density, but we were comfortable because it matched the surrounding area.
Okay, just out of curiosity, what, what's, is it, when you say it's a little bit more density?
It goes to, uh, let me get up the number, I think it's 19.4.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, yeah.
Little bit more, okay, thank you. And no one wanted to be heard on that. Is there questions or a motion from Ms. Lepasus? Did I see a hand? No?
I move for, I'll move for approval.
Ms. Lepasus moves for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Second.
Ms. Johnson? Okay, okay, Mr. Dr. Irons seconds the motion. Again, unless there's a concern, I'm not going to call roll. I will say all in favor signify by saying aye. If anyone's opposed, please let us know. All approved? All good?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Number three is 1384 Joy Avenue, Orange Grove Estates, West Ashley, TMS 3521000015, point four five acres, going from SR1, written request zoning of SR1, and there was SR, there was R4 in the county. Mr. Morgan?
Correct, and R4, I mean, SR1 is how we've been zoning most of the other properties here that met the lot size minimum. And so that's the closest compatible district with the R4 in Charleston.
Okay, is there a motion on this? Motion on that?
So, Ms.?
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey makes a motion?
I'll second, Mr. Bailey.
By Ms. Lepasus, all in favor signify by saying aye, please. Any, any opposed? How about that? Any opposed? No? Okay, it's eight to nothing, that that is approved. Number four is 230 Yates Avenue, Revlon Terrace, James Island, TMS 3430500042, request zoning of single-family residential. It was R, same thing, R4 in the county, correct, Chris? The same as the last one?
Yes, sir, and that's how we've been bringing in these other parcels in, over in Revlon Terrace.
Is there a motion on that?
I move for approval.
Ms. Jacobs, second. Mr. Bailey?
Sure, second.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All, anyone opposed to this? If not, we're going to say it's eight to nothing on that. The vote is eight to nothing, and if this be passed. Number five is 1837 Bent Grass Court, Brimble Shores, James Island, TMS 3340300023, point six one acres, request zoning of RR1. It was Special Management District S3. I've never heard of that in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, that's a little bit of an unusual district. It mainly applies to this Brimble Road area of zoning. But it is, coming in the city is RR1, which is close to that. I think S3 is three units acre, RR1 is 3.5 units an acre. But it's what we've zoned, the other properties we've annexed in that area, so it's compatible with the other stuff in the city over there.
Right, any questions to commission members or a motion?
Charlie, Councilmember Jackson, who did sign up to speak on this, has returned to the meeting. So I'm going to allow, I'm going to enable her microphone.
She's on number six?
No, zoning number five, 1837 Bent Grass Court.
Oh, five, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jackson then.
Thank you, yes, yes. This property will now be in District 12 for, for the city, and I'm proud to be the representative there, so I just wanted to lend my support to approve this zoning.
Right, but we know, we know they got a good council member, we know that for sure, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, is any questions or comments of commission members? If not, make a motion. A motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Angie Johnson.
Ms. Johnson is second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? That's great. Number six is Nats Court, West Side Peninsula, approximately point one oh acres. Well, that's a small piece, diverse residential DR2F, currently zoned, it's right away right now, City of Charleston's applicant. Chris?
I need to recuse myself.
Is that Mr. Flue?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm removing you from the meeting, and Phillip will let you know when you can return.
Thanks.
But the record, Mr. Flue has recused himself.
And this is the area where the city's been working on some affordable housing, and there's some reconfigurations that have had to go on over here with access and lot lines, things like that, and right now, this has been unzoned right of way, and that's why it's up for zoning. It's never had a zoning designated for it, and our legal folks want it to be zoned the way the surrounding properties are, which would be the DR2F.
Right, that makes sense. Any questions, comments, motions of commission members?
Move to approve.
Or second.
Ms. Jacobs makes a motion, Mr. Bailey seconds, I believe. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And now we're at number seven, which is 334 Folly Road, Dogwood Park, James Island, TMS 4240500030, point three nine acres, request zoning of GB and Folly Road overlay. It was a zone Folly Road corridor overlay district in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan? And I think someone's here to be heard on this, that's correct.
There's a gas station, an existing gas station at the corner of Tatum and Folly Road. It's going to be redeveloped for a new gas station. The owner can speak to that redevelopment that's pending. It's also going to involve an adjoining parcel that's already in the city. But it should be a, a good improvement for this section of Folly Road. This is a fairly dilapidated structure that's in place at present, and staff is comfortable with adding GB here since it's surrounded by GB on three sides.
And you said the applicant is here, Chloe?
Yes, they both should have access to unmute themselves and share video if they'd like this time.
Go ahead, folks, we're with you.
Did that hold out?
And Mr. Jordan and Watkins, you both should have.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm Mark Jordan with Refuel, founder and president of Refuel. I'm just here to answer any questions. This is part of a, an effort to, to join four properties, one behind the gas station and, and several next to it, and build something similar to what we did on Daniel Island four years ago. So I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thank you for your patience and being with us this long, this long evening.
Thank you, too.
So is any questions to commission members or a motion?
Charlie, we have a written comment that needs to be read into the record. Christopher?
Yes, ma'am, you go ahead.
Yes, let me get to that. Chloe, I'm not seeing that, I'm sorry. Hold on one second, hold on one second, let's see.
While you're finding that, Councilmember Jackson also signed up to speak on this.
Okay, I, I don't see the comment, Chloe.
Okay.
Who was?
Do we want to hear from Councilmember Jackson now if we can?
Charlie, I can read the comment because I've found it, if you want me to read it from the record.
Okay, well, let's hear from Councilmember Jackson first.
But I've found it if you want me to do that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I, I'm here as an enthusiastic representative of the city on the Folly Road, we think Folly Road Steering Board. And so I'm, I'm very pleased, and I know that Councilmember Appel joins me in being very happy that this property will be undergoing redevelopment, not only for what will be, but also because during that process, we will be gaining another section of multi-use path to achieve the vision of the Folly Road improvements.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Donna, you want to read, you have that in front of you, you want to read that?
Yeah, so it's from a Susan Milliken. It says, "Please relay to the planning commission that I oppose the upzoning in conjunction with an annexation. Please rezone this property limited business, which is what neighboring properties are currently zoned. Due to its proximity to an established single-family neighborhood and the proximity to the historic LeCloud property, which has become a Charleston County park and interpretive center, is timely and appropriate to take this opportunity to zone this particular parcel limited business as the property next door is limited business and was recently upzoned to limited business."
Now, we don't have the applicant here. The applicant's not with us, is that correct?
No, Mr. Jordan is, he is, but that statement is not entirely correct, because as you look at this map in front of you, it's the corner property that's coming in the city. To the rear of it is the property's own general business already in the city, and to the south of it is a property already zoned general business in the city, and across the street, across Folly Road, all those properties are zoned general business as well.
Okay, well, I just want to give the owner an opportunity to speak if he wanted to, I'm not telling you, but unless there's a question of commission members or a concern of commission members. Do you think a commission member want to speak?
And just, sorry, sorry, Charlie.
Go ahead, Eric.
Um, just in reference, response to that, too, because of the. Um, just in reference, response to that, too, um, because of the Folly Road overlay itself that the uh city has um adopted, there is also a limitation in um uses and density. So, you know, this is, this is highly, it's a, it's appropriate, is what I would like to say.
Would you like to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion for approval.
And I'll, and I'll second, and I'll second the motion.
Great, Ms. Harrison moves for approval, Ms. Jacobs seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed, just so we get the record, Chris, is anyone opposed to this um, this zoning? If not, it, it's approved um eight to zero. We've already approved item number eight. Can we prove the minutes? Um, it's a whole hour.
I move for approval, I move for approval of the minutes.
Ms. Jacobs moves for approval of the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bailey, is that you?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Mr. Dr. Irons, great, thank you. Uh, any questions? If not, can I ask, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the minutes being approved? I hope not. And we got one last item, election of chair and vice chair. I know it's late. Do we wanna do this now? Do we need to do this now, Chris? Do we, should we wait till next meeting when Mr. LaSane's here? You tell me.
Meeting if you wanna do.
But can we wait till next meeting? Is that good with you all? That, can we get a motion that we defer that?
I'll move for the referral.
Hey, all in favor, let's say Donna and Ms. Johnson, I'm gonna say Donna makes a motion, Ms. Johnson seconds. All in favor of deferral, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? You know, I appreciate everyone's patience, so if y'all were here, I'd buy you a beer, but you're not here, so that's good. I'll drink the beer myself, but um, is there a motion to uh, to uh dismiss this meeting? Motion by Ms. Johnson, Ms. Jacobs seconds, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I figured that you'd be unanimous. Thanks, everybody, for their time, I appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Night.
Have a good night.